Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 24th, 2025 School Board of Manatee County Regular Board Meeting. Want to officially call this meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to start off with our reading of our district's Vision by Mr. Tatum, and then you're going to introduce the invoker as well?
Yes, I will. The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And this evening, we have Wyatt Brockson from Sun Coast Baptist Church, and he will be doing our invocation.
If you all please rise in the case and then also following the pledge of allegiance.
It's power heads for word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to have this meeting tonight. And Lord, I thank you for the positions of power that you have blessed every school board member here with. And Lord, we thank you for our country that you've given us that allows us to have these meetings and make these types of decisions. But Father, above all, I magnify the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, your only begotten Son. Jesus died for the sins of every man in this room, and he is the everlasting hope. Bible says that we have redemption through his blood, and three days later, Jesus rose from the dead to give everlasting and new life to all who will receive him. And that is our hope. And Lord, I praise you. Now, Lord, I ask that you would bless the meeting, that you would bless us with wisdom about the issues being discussed, and that your guiding hand would interfere, and that the end results would lead everyone affected closer to Jesus. In Jesus' name, we thank you and ask, amen.
Thank you. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, moves us to item number five, approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under the Agenda Amendments on June 24th, 2025 Agenda, updated June 23rd, 2025, and posted to the district website, www.mantyschools.net. We should be in Granicus, so looking for a motion and a second.
I'll motion.
I will second. I'm almost in Granicus. There we go.
So Mr. Kennedy, second?
Tried to. There we go.
Ms. Bray, get up.
I want to amend the agenda to pull item. Is this the time right, Laura, to do this?
Correct.
There she goes. Okay. I want a motion to approve the agenda to amend with item number 9.20, pull to new business for discussion later in the meeting. Item 9.20 is the legal services.
Oh, okay.
Right. I want to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, okay. Do you need a second for that?
I don't think I need a second.
I don't think you need to. I think it just can be pulled.
Okay.
Right. So we're going to pull that.
Yeah. Our policy says you can pull it. So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
As amended.
Nobody else stood up to speak? Let's go ahead and vote.
Thank you for that.
That passes five to zero. Was that just the motion? We don't need a, we don't need to vote on her motion to pull it.
No.
No.
It's our policy say you can pull. Was that for everything?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I didn't see it. Okay. No worries. All right, let's move on to item number six, approval of the minutes. Mr. Chapman?
The interim superintendent recommends approval of the minutes from the May 20th, 2025 Special School Board Meeting and the May 20th, 2025 School Board Meeting and meeting of the leasing corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Granicus is stuck.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as said by Mr. Chapman. Any, no one stood up to speak? You said you are not in Granicus?
I am. It's just not giving me the option to do anything.
Yeah, I haven't seen a motion or a second done yet. So let's go ahead and vote manually.
Oh, I did.
Okay, there's first and a second. All right.
Oh, now I see a motion.
And I did second.
That was my fault.
Did you get second?
Yep.
Okay.
There it is.
There we go.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the minutes of the board meeting and leasing corporation meeting. That passes five to zero. All right, item number seven, public comments this evening. We do have four public comments. It looks like everybody on here has done this before, so probably don't need to go over the time limits and things like that up above us. So first one is Dr. Laura Esslinger, followed by Chuck Fradley.
Good evening, school board members.
Evening.
Superintendent. My name is Dr. Laura Esslinger. This is my third and hopefully final time standing before you, asking for your support of charter schools. But I want to spend time thanking you while also sharing a really powerful story. Just across the way is Bradenton Bay High School, a charter school that opened last year. It may not look like much from the outside, just a box, an unused Manatee County office building, but inside are the most extraordinary educators, teachers, principals, staff that truly care. They don't teach, just teach. They lift all our students up. One of those students is my cousin, Austin. He is 20 years old, and he just graduated with his high school diploma, one of 18 graduates this year. When he was 10 years old, we lost his mother, my cousin, in a boating accident off Jewfish Key. He struggled deeply, left school, and for years believed he wasn't good enough. But Bradenton Bay gave him a second chance, and he was actually chosen to be salutatorian this year. Austin is here today, and he was allowing me to share a portion of his graduation speech. Losing my mom felt like losing a part of myself. I drifted through life without direction until I realized I needed my diploma to honor her and move forward. Bradenton Bay gave me a fresh start. I passed the reading test, and I proved to myself I am capable. To anyone struggling, know this, it's never too late. Your past does not define your future. This was the power of our charter schools and educators. So in closing, I'd like to thank each one of you personally. Ms. Felton, thank you for stepping into this role with curiosity and care. I know you see all sides. Ms. Bray, wow, your empathy, your compassion and passion is unmatched. I am so proud that you lead my child's district. Mr. Kennedy, thank you for returning to the board, your many years of commitment and dedication to our kids. My husband and I have been your number one supporter, and we thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Choat, wow, I've seen such a change in your understanding and your voice and your stance, and I thank you. Oh, shoot, Mr. Tatum, in your own words, a better you, a better me, a better understanding, a better us.
That's enough.
Thank you. Your job is so hard, and as a veterinarian, I so understand it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fradley, followed by Mr. Zikufus.
How do you follow that?
How do you follow that? Congratulations, Austin. That was awesome. Nothing prepared, board members, but thank you. Good to see you guys. Honestly, I just, I'm here to thank you for your open-mindedness. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your care and love for Manatee County, because that's what this is all about. I also, you know, with the sales tax, a lot of work. So Mr. Chapman, Mr. Rinaldi, Mr. Sellers, this has been a lot of work for everybody to get us to this point. And a lot of work, and I just want to really thank you for that. I just have one more request, a little more time, a little more clarity. At Rowlett Middle Academy, we have a lot of capital needs, maintenance needs, new construction needs that are going to incur long-term debt for us. So one of the things that is a challenge for us is budgeting what we can do. I know the sales tax is not guaranteed past 2032 for any of us, but up until 2032, if we could have a better idea, better understanding of what our 50, 60, 70, 80, 100% is going to be. The verbiage with the debt service and what that may or may not be sounds a lot like the 2016 board meeting when it was the district takes care of their needs first, and then everything else left is equally split between the charter schools. My very simplistic understanding when we started this was that it was going to be that equitable share. A child is worth a certain amount of money, whether it's a charter or public. I understood then what 50% of that total was and 60 and so on. Now, I don't know. And that's a little gray for me, especially when I'm budgeting some larger projects. So the way it is now, 60% could be less than the 50% the year before. Not sure if that's the case, but because I don't understand, I don't know. So I would just ask for maybe a little bit more clarity ahead of time so that we can do our budgeting and not put ourselves in a place where we can't pay our bills for the improvements that we need for our kids. So again, from bottom of my heart for Rowlett Academy, we really appreciate you all. Thank you, thank you, and appreciate your work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zikufus, followed by Michael Mears.
Austin was my student, too. Right? Very fine. Thank you, Austin. Appreciate that. Good evening, board members and interim superintendent Chapman. For the past few months, I've stood here at this podium like a teacher with only three minutes left to class. Okay? Trying to make every second count. And as we approach this final moment, which it could be, my hope is that we're walking away with a few lasting lessons. We've learned that, number one, we've learned that all charter schools are not separate from public system. We are one district. Number two, we've seen the parent choice in Manatee County ranks nationally, and it's growing and it's deeply rooted within our community. Three, we've come to better understand how charters ease the district's financial and facility burdens while also raising their overall performance. And four, we recognize that every board member serves thousands of charter families, making this issue, this issue not just policy but personal. During this time, I've had the fortunate position to meet and speak with each of you. And in those conversations, I've come to appreciate what you bring to this governing body. I've learned that each of you carries a story, and every one of you has a story in your heart for the kids, all the kids. I learned one of you knows the unimaginable pain as a parent experiencing loss and still shows up in a fight for every student's future. One of you knows firsthand what it's like to grow up without a clear place to call home. One of you is a fierce advocate and the voiceless, for the voiceless and marginalized. And one of you carries the weight of an early loss and knows what it means to take care of a sibling. And one of you is a steady, unwavering voice for doing what's right, even when no one is looking. And as for me, Ruby and I have spent over 30 years walking through school hallways, raising children our own, and trying to build something that leaves kids better. So when I say I believe in this board, and I know your, and your vote tonight, I mean it. And as we prepare for this discussion, I want you to gently restate the heart of our current concern. Tonight's sales tax surcharge action items is a step in the right direction, but because of the debt service deductions and the slow phase-in, equity for charter students is dismissed, diminished, and delayed. Since that is, this is a required approach and already considers current district obligations, which was the concern voiced on May 23rd, I respectfully share considering a full proportion of the share for charter starting of the 25-26 school year. Also, the faulty clause in this procedural document allows for, there is a faulty clause that allows for future debt deductions and sets the stage for ongoing reductions in charter school funding, making it difficult for planning. This loophole must be closed, period. We've come too far to forget about these students again. A vote tonight can bring us closer, not just a resolution, but to real restoration. Because when it's all said and done, every student in Manatee County is one of your kids, and every one of your stories tells me that you will not leave them behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Mears?
My name is Michael John Mears, and you saw me before. And if I asked each of you, what did you hear me say? You probably don't remember. It was brief, and I'll be even briefer tonight. The only thing I really had to say before is, one thing is I'm affiliated with Palmetto Charter. I'm actually the chair of the board. On no behalf of them, the poor things they have to put up with me every single month for time in and time out. I've been on the board for a couple of years. Learned about the half-cent sales tax, actually this year, and the fact that charter schools were not being included. I asked when I was before you, for you to just write this wrong. And I wanted to thank you because I feel like you have listened. You have listened to the voices, many of which are much more detailed than what I could offer. But I'm very appreciative. Being a board is not an easy thing to do. You've got a lot of poles and a lot of directions to go. But I just wanted to call, come up and say thank you. I know the vote hasn't happened yet. I know that some are not happy with as far as we could go, but I feel like you set a direction, and you will set a direction that is inclusive for the charter schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public comment. Thank you for all four who spoke, and congratulations, Austin. And we'll move to item number eight, which is reports and presentations with our 24-25 fast progress monitoring. Mr. Jensen, I believe it's you.
Thank you very much, Chair Choat, board members, Superintendent Chapman. Pleased to be here with you this evening to share some information and raw data from our spring and FAST PM3 assessment results. So I have the illustrious Evan McCarthy with me, our Director of Assessment and Research, and he'll kick off the presentation, and then we'll go from there.
Good evening, board, Superintendent. Just a reminder, this is our, kind of our third end of the year spring data, third round of testing from the state. K through two all takes place in the Renaissance or STAR platform, as it's more commonly known to a lot of parents. And everything else takes place in that KMBM assessment platform. So one thing we really want to start off with this time is we've kind of shown you some of the, like, principal parent reports in the past. I wanted to show you where parents can more easily access stuff if they're doing like what I do, if I'm looking at my child's results on my phone. So in, for any, any of our parents through the Focus Parent Portal, once they click in there, they'll see above where it says their grades and their attendance stuff. It'll see, there'll be a little thing that says Florida statewide assessments, will be a little Florida logo. If they click on that, it automatically takes them right through into the state family portal platform, which is a lot honestly prettier and user-friendly looking than the PDF reports are. And I like this because like the landing page gives you the takeaways of, here's your most recent tests, here's how your student scored, here's where that falls on the continuum of the achievement levels. But what's really nice about this platform is it lets you click in and see kind of more detailed results. So like when I was looking at my child's results, if you click through to things, it'll let you see breakdowns by different types of questions or different reporting categories. So if you're wondering, okay, my student got a two or a three, what does that mean? Were they a transitional reader? What does that mean? You can click in, and it'll tell you exactly how they scored in each area. A lot of times, it might say a percentile with where they fell in that area. So that can tell you like, okay, they're lower in this area than they are in this area. So, okay, maybe I don't know what that is, but I can click on it, or I can go ask you something specific because a parent you can actually look at with your kid and know where they're at. Another thing that I really like in this platform and that I think is really helpful to all those parents that are just trying to figure out what they can do to help their kid is there is actually a tab in there that's resources to help your student. Or, yeah, to help your student, and it gets very specific based on the student's test results, very specific things you can do to work for, to support your student at home. I just wanted to share that because that's pretty cool.
We'd encourage all of our, our parents and families to log in, check out those parent resources, activities, and what they can do to, you know, become more informed about their student score results and, you know, ways they can work with their student over the summer to support their learning.
Do you, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Can you track how many, if the parent goes in? I'm just curious.
I doubt it.
Because it's at the state level, right?
It's tumbling through the state website. So, and I don't think, I don't think Focus is designed on like the kind of website architecture. That might be a, I'd have to ask, but I don't think so.
We could investigate to see if we could see how many parents click through, maybe.
I'm just curious, you know.
It's a good question.
It's not a, don't, you know, go to great links. I'm just curious, because, you know. Okay, thank you.
That's an interesting question.
Also, just one, as we go in over our spring results, wanted to go over kind of what are the school or district grade components once again. A blue chunk is all the reading and ELA areas that are in the school and district grades. Then we got some math is all in orange. We've got one science achievement bucket, one social studies achievement bucket. And then we get into the acceleration areas of middle school acceleration, graduation, and college and career acceleration. Grad and college and career acceleration, we've obviously had since January, since they're based on last year.
And so just some considerations, and you've seen several of these before, before we get into the, to the large data deck. And I want to again thank Mr. McCarthy and his team because as you've seen and previewed, there's a substantial number of slides in this deck, lots of data, and there's lots of other data behind the scenes going on after, after we complete state testing in the spring. And his team just does an incredible job of quickly assembling data and making it usable by all of our teachers, principals, and district stakeholders so that we can take action on it. So just some considerations before we look at the data. First of all, remember, we had some significant first semester educational disruptions because of the hurricanes. And there was variance between districts and the state of Florida as to how many districts lost how many days. When we get to the math slides, as we've talked about throughout the year, we had a change in how we assigned accelerated students in mathematics to grade-level tests in our district-operated schools. So it kind of makes the year-to-year comparison data difficult for this year because we're comparing, you know, students who are testing above grade level this year to students who didn't test above grade level last year. And so there's some difficulties in the comparison data. I'll walk everyone through that when we get to the math slide. That'll kind of resolve itself next year, but for this year, the comparison year-to-year is difficult. And then a really, really important consideration for this deck in particular. This presentation contains the raw PM3 results, which means this is exactly the results as they came out from all the students who tested in the district on PM3. This is not what is going to be in the school and district grades that the state releases in the upcoming weeks. Obviously, when we have our next meeting in July, we're optimistic that the state will have released the finals, you know, student data as well as school grades and district grades by then. So this is, and that data gets cleaned up based on a number of factors. And so the scores you see here will be different than the scores you see in the district grade because students are taken out of the district grade formulas and all kinds of other things happen based on, you know, students who are only here half the year, for instance, things like that. So typically, you're going to see a number of categories go up. So like if you compare to this data to what it says on our school grade sheet last year, or district grade last year, you're going to say like, what happened? But rest assured that this is just the raw data. It hasn't been cleaned up, and it's not the data that ends up being used in the accountability system. I think that's an important consideration. I think another important consideration is just kind of as we're looking at a lot of very granular data in a lot of different subject areas, thinking about really two dimensions of looking at this data. One is achievement, right? Like how many students were proficient? Like how high did we perform? And then the other dimension is growth, like are we making progress? So even in areas where we're maybe not at the level of achievement we want, are we on the trajectory where we're making growth? And I think one of the really positive things that we're seeing in the school district of Manatee County is just an incredible amount of momentum. is just an incredible amount of momentum. We're seeing positive growth in our district-operated schools in a number of dimensions. Reading, math, social studies, science, grad rate, a lot of positive momentum across the board. And in kind of the aggregate lens to look at this, because we're about to look at really granular data. The aggregate lens is, last year was our highest district score ever. So, last year, we were at 739 points in that matrix accountability formula Evan just went over with you, which was our highest score ever. This year, we anticipate beating that score and having a new highest score ever. So, I, we'll look at grade level by grade level data here, but we think when we roll that data up and the school releases kind of what that rolled-up data looks like, we'll be in a, we'll continue to show positive growth in the School District of Manatee County, which I think is a testament to the hard work of our students, the hard work of our teachers, families, and obviously, the support of our school board. So, thank you.
Chapman?
Yeah.
Mr. Jensen, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Of course.
But are you telling me there's a chance?
Um.
We're going to be in A district, are you telling?
I'll be the pessimist. That's usually my role.
I mean, I think.
Be closer.
We'll be, we'll be closer.
Closer is good.
Like, I'm optimistic we'll be a B++.
Fair enough.
It's one in a million, Mr. Kennedy, but there is a chance.
But again, I think you'll see us, you know, closing that gap to where we want to be. And again, having positive momentum in a number of different dimensions getting there, right? Can you sustain growth? And I think it's also about building an infrastructure for success. One of the things, last year, we had a really strong year academically. And Mr. McCarthy, who can sometimes be a data pessimist, kind of prepped us ahead of time. You know, sometimes you kind of revert to the mean, right? Like, there's always like a falloff. And he was worried that we would see declines in a number of our categories this year, just because we've seen historical trends like that. And sometimes, when you have a really good learning gains year, then you plummet the next year, right? We're not seeing that this year. We're just seeing kind of either sustaining where we're at, or continued growth in areas. And so, I'm optimistic that we're really building an infrastructure for continued success, which, again, is the optimist in me, but.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Felton had a question as well.
So, in looking at your considerations, and, and, sorry, those are blurry. So, in, some of the things that I've found as a teacher, and it's been a couple of years since I've looked at my own raw data from students. And there can be a big swing. And I'm assuming things are the same, things haven't changed that much. So, I'm just, this is why I'm verifying with you that, you know, you'll have, you know, every student, you know, gets this question wrong, we're going to throw that one out, because there's obviously a problem with the question if no child can get that question correct. It's not that, you know, they're not learning that, it's that there's something wrong with the question. And some other things like that. I'm assuming that is still the same, they still do that, do they, you know, clean that up? Because that was some of the things that I found through testing, but I didn't teach through FAST.
Yeah, at this point, all the questions that, so, they're tested on more questions than are actually used for scoring.
Okay.
There's like maybe five-ish more questions on average, I think, that each student sees than actually count towards their score. So, those are all, they're like pilot questions, that they run, they test them out the year before, use that to create their, figure out how much these questions worth, whether it's a junk question with like bad, high discrimination data, or something like that, and then it's tossed. And then they decide that, and then you set the next year's set of solid questions that they're actually scoring on.
Okay, thank you, because I wasn't sure how that worked.
That's a great question.
So, we're going to jump into the assessment results now. We'll start with kind of ELA. Just as a reminder, like Mr. McCarthy said, your K through two students are testing in a different platform than your three-through-ten students. Also, your K through two data in that platform is not part of the state accountability formula. And also, as a reminder, you're going to see two slides for every grade-level distribution. So, you'll see two slides for K through two. The first slide just shows the state and Manatee, that includes everyone. So, that's the charter and the district-operated schools all rolled up together. And then the second slide, you'll see the breakdown between the state district-operated schools and charter schools for that same data, so you can see how we arrived at the number on the first slide. And I think that's important context, because you'll see some places where, you know, you'll see kind of variance between those two, you know, types of schools. And then, in some areas, you'll see consistency between them. So, I just think, again, giving you as much context as possible. I also think it's really important with this K through two data, in particular with kindergarten, to realize that not everyone is taking the same test within the state. So, there's two tests, there's STAR early literacy, and there's STAR reading. Early literacy is like the prelude to reading, reading's the more advanced test. And you can see the footnotes. In kindergarten, our probable readers take STAR reading for PM2 and PM3. So, we try to get our kids onto STAR reading as quickly as possible. That's not necessarily the case across the state and across all schools. So, you have kind of rolled-up data across two different tests of two different difficulty levels. And so, it makes the state-to-district comparison different. We like getting our students onto the STAR reading exam as quickly as possible, because we think it better prepares them for continued success, and it provides more accurate measures. So, I think the kindergarten one is particularly fraught, just because it's rolled up across two different exams. So, just keep that in mind as you look at the comparison data there.
So, with that, Mr. McCarthy, do you look at different district that does the same kind of pattern that we do? Do you compare district to district as well?
So, K2 data, the state handles their statewide assessment data in different ways. They treat three-through-ten like actual full-state assessments, but K2, they only, the only thing we have available is the statewide numbers. So, we don't have any way of really seeing, are they actually? Our assumption is, most people leave the kids on STAR literacy, because that's kind of what the growth patterns in the scores look like. But we can't actually tell district to district what everybody's actually doing there.
So, this is the whole district data. And again, you see kind of very similar numbers to last year, as well as kind of mirroring state growth. And then this kind of breaks down district-operated and charter schools. And I think, again, my lens is always building an infrastructure for success academically in school district, and continued progress towards our goals. And so, I think in our, our schools, you know, across all three of these bands, we improved from last year. Or in second grade, where you saw a whole statewide decline, which could be like a testing effect or something like that. The test was particularly hard this year, or for whatever reason, the whole state was down K2. We actually decreased less. So, we, we're, you know, in second grade, we were lagging the state by a point last year. We've equalized that for this year, even though there's that decline.
Ms. Felton had a question.
So, again, and I'm not going to call on the charter schools to answer this, because they're not all here. And that would take time. But, so they, the charter schools also, with their kindergarten programs, also have the STAR or the liter, early literacy, or the STAR reading as well?
Yeah, we have the same guidelines.
Okay.
We have everybody in first grade starts on STAR reading.
Okay, so.
And then, everybody in kindergarten, we say, we send out a list of, here's who tested as a probable reader on STAR literacy. Please put them on the STAR reading test the next.
Are we able to look at, like, the percentages of kids that might be in the STAR literacy through kindergarten versus the STAR reading? And kind of look at that, just because, you know, like you said, if you're comparing kind of two different tests in one grade.
We could give you a breakdown of that.
I think, from my memory, I think for kindergarten on this one, we just used early literacy.
We just used, okay.
So, I think you're just seeing our students who were not testing at probable reader already.
Okay.
So, we can give you a breakdown to be more specific. So, moving on to third through fifth, this is when we switch to the FAST assessment. And obviously, we had a fairly robust conversation around this in our earlier workshop today. Wanted to provide some additional context as well. So, this is FAST, this is now what counts in our, our school accountability formula from grades three through 10 here. Some highlights. First of all, that 52% in third grade, which we discussed a lot at the workshop. Obviously, that's an area we're really targeting for the 25-26 school year. And it's, we're going to be doing that reading coach initiative. We are going to be doing some additional monitoring, rolling out some additional common progress monitors that we can use to make sure we're tracking individual student progress. And I think there's some really robust things we're going to be doing there to close the gap with the state and improve, improve on this number. But I do want to say that this number is still the highest we've had in our modern assessment era as a school district. So, even though my goal is to get that number much higher than it is as a system, we've, we're sustaining at kind of the peak of what we've achieved to this point. And so, I think we're on the right trajectory. And then I also think, again, one of the things we look at is kind of year-to-year cohort data, right? Like, our third graders who, who left at 52%, where are they ending at, you know, fourth grade? And kind of that year-to-year cohort data, and seeing students make progress there. And I think we're seeing nice upward trajectories there. And again, you know, continued growth in fourth and fifth, which I think is positive.
Real quick on that, if you can go back to that slide. So, I think you just said it. To me, I don't, I don't think that, unless, I'm reading this wrong. So, let's say third grade. That change from last year to this year, that plus-two for the state, and for us, it was zero, right? But that's from last year to this year.
Correct.
Two different kids.
Yes.
Two different cohorts. For me, the data is from 52%, so third grade last year, 2024, PM3, level three-plus, we had 52% in third grade. Those third graders now are now fourth graders, 2025, and that's gone from 52 to 54. So, we've gained 2%. Those, those third graders that are 52, we've gained now more. So, that has gone up by the 2%. Is that hypothetic, I mean, looking at it, 52, 54, it was the same going back from last year. But not in every single case. It's not, so, I don't know if I'm making sense. I'm not looking at necessarily the third grade, third grade from last year to this year. I'm looking at third grade moving to fourth grade. It just so happens on this slide, on the last slide, they weren't the same. And it happens to be that they're the same on this slide, up 2%, et cetera. But, or, or even look at, so, fourth grade, 53, went up to 54, right? So, that, to me, is just as important, rather than last year's kids that were third graders. What is that compared to this year's third graders? I mean, they're, they're, they're different kids. But I do love, I like to see the progressive of what we're doing as, from 52 to 54, you know, it's that's third grade. You're at 52 last year, now there's 54 level threes in the fourth grade. So, we've grown 2% over the course of time. So, I think some of that, to me, is the data that I'd rather concentrate on, rather than like year-to-year. But I appreciate putting all this, I mean, all this together is obviously great. But that is important, if not more important than that data, to be honest.
I agree with you. We, we look at it both ways, right? We want to see, we want to see growth at the kind of, you know, third grade level, year over year over year, where we're constantly getting better in third grade. But we also want every cohort to grow as they progress through their K10 experience. So, our, and our school administrators look at it that way, too. They're constantly kind of evaluating their cohorts year-on-year. And I think it's even more impactful when you look at it at the school level, instead of the district level where it's rolled up, right? Because then it's like, what are we doing at this school to move kids from third to fourth to fifth grade, right? And/or from sixth to seventh to eighth grade? And so, I think our school administrators looking at the data like that really helps paint a portrait of what learning looks like at their schools.
And I, and I think that as you, as you look at, like, yes, you want to be better last year, or this year in third grade, having plus, you know, three-plus, level three-plus than last year. But remember, is what we said, talked about today with the village and the early learning, right? Is like, if you look at this data, the ones that, for the last three or four years, the students who've gotten that early learning, that three or four years ago, the other ones didn't get, is that you can, you'll hopefully see a jump. And that's where I think we can absolutely look at these numbers and say, for the year-to-year, say, hey, we did something right with the early learning stuff, three or four years ago, when we started, this third grader was a kindergartner. But I, I, again, I think going from year-to-year, from third grade to fourth grade, and following that, hopefully, that's the data that we're getting more and more, you know, plus, you know, level threes plus, as we continue to, as they continue to attrition, you know, go through attrition into the school system. So, thank you. Ms. Spray, Ms. Spray was led up to speak, too, sorry.
He stole my thunder, actually. Yeah, because that's what I was actually looking at, too. One of the things I wanted to ask about is, from the workshop this morning, we're talking about having literacy coaches in every elementary. And I was going through my staffing book. I don't have a problem with that. I want to know, though, if we have a school that's doing extremely well, and a school that struggles. I would rather have that school that struggles have two coaches, than the one that's doing really, really well. I don't want to risk losing their, you know, their level of reading, but they don't have one now, maybe. I don't, I don't know. Example would be Anna Maria, do they have a reading coach? I don't, I don't know that. I don't know which ones have had them. I don't think all of them have. But if we've got some that are struggling, but we have schools that are succeeding really well, I would rather use that source down at the level where we need it. So, I don't think it needs to be, I want everybody to think about that, Mr. Chapman. I know you guys did a lot of work on that staffing plan. But I just don't think it's a blanket thing, throw a reading coach at every school. So, that was the one thing I took away from the workshop and started looking at the staffing plan this afternoon. And to Mr. Choate's point, second grade to third grade, if you look at that even, we were to minus, down 1% to flat. So, that's, you're still gained from second grade to third, because you were down a percent, right? Am I looking at that wrong? I know it's different.
Yeah.
It's different, I know.
Those are very different tests.
Right, it's two different tests.
Once like fifteen minutes long.
But to me, it's still progress.
One's like two hours long.
Right, but to me, it's still progress. To me, it's still progress. I mean, it's almost like going from elementary to middle. You've got to adjust, you know? And so, to me, you know, second graders adjusting to a third-grade reading test. And then, second graders are new third graders, so, you know? And fourth graders are old third graders. So, I can see progress here. I'm a little disappointed, you know, that we had such a fun balance that we didn't throw some of those resources out there, you know, after PM1, you know, last year. So, I don't know what happened there, it wasn't my call, but.
So, well, thank you for that. It's going to be hard to pin Mr. McCarthy down on some of these data analysis questions, because as a resident economist, he likes to be very technical about making sure, you know, in the analysis. But one of the wonderful things about the literacy coach structure is previously, really, the only schools that had reading coaches were our Title I schools that chose to use a portion of their Title I funding in order to purchase a coach for their own school. And what this structure allows is, one, comprehensive improvement in third-grade reading across the board, because I agree with you, we have schools that demonstrate extreme need. But we also have, I think, high-performing schools that could really also improve their results and do some, some work to raise their reading commiserate with their student body. So, I think we have reading need across the board. But what this staffing structure allows for is, now, if I'm a Title I school receiving this extra Title I funding, I now get to reallocate that funding that I was using for that reading coach to either purchase a second reading coach, a math coach, or additional resources. Correct. And so, now, the schools who are getting additional resources can choose to deploy those resources for an additional coach, or another structure that fits their school's needs.
Okay, so they will have the option to Title I plus district-funded?
Correct.
Okay.
And then this is your third-through-fifth data broken out by the kind of district. And then this is your, um, third through fifth data broken out by the kind of district charter breakdown. And again, um, one of the things I'm pleased with, again, um, we've, we've talked at length about third grade today and, and an area of need for sure, but also, um, our highest score ever in third. But again, continued improvement in fourth and fifth, um, like closing the gap with the state particularly at five, where we're seeing, um, positive growth. So again, I think there's some, some very positive stories in our elementary reading data as well. It's a reflection of the hard work of our teachers and students. Now getting into middle school, um, you'll see your sixth, seventh, and eighth grade data here. And, um, I think it's, we'll take a look at kind of the, the breakdown on the next slide of the, um, the district charter breakdown. Um, again, positive growth in all three areas, but particularly in sixth and seventh, not as fast as the state. But again, I think, um, in our district-operated schools, um, we're starting to close the gap. We obviously see, um, a need to increase proficiency significantly at our schools in middle. But I think we are seeing some really positive work happen, you know, plus three in sixth, plus two in seventh, plus three in eighth. Again, lots of work still left to do, um, but, you know, plus signs in the columns, which makes me excited about the work.
Um, quick question. Evan, you just brought this up a minute ago and I, I didn't even think about it. But could you talk a little bit about the difference within the, the test structure? Obviously, each sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they're tested on different standards, so the, the material is different. But I'm, I'm more about the, the format, number of questions, length of the test, things like that. Is it, is it a little more similar in six, seven, eight?
Yeah, so each test, um, in three through ten is about forty, I think it's forty-five question, forty-five official questions long. Um, then, like I said, they tack on a couple of pilot questions that make the test longer but don't count towards the score.
Yeah.
And, um, in the ELA tests, so you'll click on a question, you'll click, oh, click into the test. Your first question, that thing might give you, I think, like we showed you earlier in the year, might give you like two pair, or two reading sections from different texts with like eight different tabs of different questions tied to that, those reading sections. Then you have to combine what you learned from reading, both different reading passages, if they answer all the questions. Um, and then the way the three, the third through tenth grade ELA tests work is then after you finish all the questions associated with those passages, it then will, if you got, did really well on answering those questions, it will adjust and give you a little bit of a harder question set, or set of questions the next batch. If you did poorly on that first set, it'll adjust down and give you a bit of an easier passage and question set and kind of work your way towards the end of the test that way.
So, so even a third grader and a tenth grader, the, the length is essentially the same. Skill set is different?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the biggest difference is how patient they are and willing to take their time. The third grader is more likely to take their time.
Okay.
That's true.
As long as, as long as we're on the topic, too.
No matter how much we'll tell them, they will not take their time.
Say that again?
No matter how much we tell them, they will not take their time.
Oh, right, kids are always good, right? No, but I, as long as we're kind of calling back to that workshop, I would just ask the board and, and Mr. Chapman, like, I really found that workshop to be incredibly informative and interesting. And when you got into the mechanics and the kind of internal guts of the test, I really thought that was interesting. I hope we can do that again.
Absolutely.
Coming up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
When we get our, when our data is now, you know, finessed and, and the state has given us our actual numbers, uh, and you come back hopefully at some point to go over those with us, can we also see how the kids went from PM one to PM three? I'd like to see how, how they start off. Cuz then we're also comparing apples to apples, the same kids from how they, how they grow. And, and that's something that I always like to see. And I know you're, you're, I can see you're thinking something over there, so I'll let you speak to that. But that was something that I was interested in.
Evan's original slide deck for this was sixty slides long and it had
And it had that in there.
All of those.
Had that in there. The teacher brain is kicking in over here, so I'm like, well, how did they grow?
I said, Evan, I don't know if I can do sixty slides tonight, so let's take those out. So we actually have a draft that has all of that data in it, so we can send it to you after.
Oh, yeah, I'd love to see that.
It'll basically be four slides now per, per grade band. And you'll see the PM one to PM three growth, and then you'll see the year-to-year comparison.
And, and not that I really wanted it to, to be tonight or we're gonna get home at eleven. But, um, but that is something, you know, having, having watched kids grow in the classroom, you know, when you have your, you know, the teachers here know, when you have your kids in your class and you're like, you know, this kid could barely form a sentence and now they're writing a paragraph, that to me is also really, really shows how well our teachers are working, how our classes are working, how well our, the, the programs we have in place are working. And so that stuff is, is one of the things that's really important to me.
I agree with you completely. One of my, you know, we have an emphasis on writing, as I'm sure you've seen on your school rounds. One of my favorite things our elementary schools will do is, and many of them, you'll kind of see the writing wall leading into the cafeteria or in a common hallway. And you'll see kind of K one, two, three, four, five, and the teachers in each grade level will post writing samples from their classes of each grade level. And then, um, you get to see the progression of student writing from K through fifth grade. And I just think it's wonderful when you see that out of a school.
Thanks.
Um, and then we're moving into ninth and tenth grade. And, um, there's definitely, uh, when we get to the next slide, some, some, a little bit of aberrant data here. But, um, the, uh, again, uh, comparison to the state, a little bit of growth in tenth grade. I think some, some work left to do, but I, I do think the ninth grade data point is a little weighted by, um, just some very, uh, some changes in ninth grade performance. So.
Is what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Sorry.
There's just, uh, I would say the, the ninth grade results for the charter schools were significantly lower than last year. So we're kind of looking at, you know, what may have caused that, but
Right.
Again, district-operated schools improved a point. We still, again, our proficiency isn't where, um, we're, we're still growing in those dimensions. We grew a point in ninth grade, grew a point in tenth grade. But I would say that the negative two on the prior slide was just because of, um, for some reason, we saw a decline in ninth grade charter performance. And now we're onto math. All right, so math is, um, different this year, um, except for K through two because, um, there's no math acceleration in K through two. And so, um, this again is, um, on a different exam. Um, you can see, um, our students do well in math. We tend to get better as we go, um, especially in the early grades. Um, strong performance in first grade as a district. Um, and you can see, um, again, positive growth in our district-operated schools. And, um, again, just testament to the, to the math instruction.
I mean, yeah, look at kindergarten from last year, we're fifty-three, and now this year they're sixty-one, right?
Uh, fifty-four to sixty-three in our district schools.
I'm sorry, fifty-four to sixty-three, yeah. Yeah, it's huge.
So, yeah, really great growth. And, um, again, we, we're very proud of our, our math outcomes, especially in elementary. So just a primer on math acceleration, and you've seen this on a number of presentations throughout the year. There's really three pathways for math acceleration. You've got your traditional pathway, that's you take sixth grade math and sixth, seventh graded, uh, seventh, and then eighth grade math in grade eight, which is really pre-algebra. Um, and then in an accelerated pathway, we're really accelerating towards taking Algebra I in eighth grade. And then your students on the most accelerated math pathway, um, are gonna be taking Algebra I in seventh grade and geometry in eighth grade. So they really are out of their required high school math courses by the time they enter high school in the most accelerated pathway. And this, the state actually, this year created courses, or actually last year created courses for, um, accelerating math and kind of continuing this pathway down into elementary schools, starting in third grade. And so you can see kind of the traditional pathway, and then we put the most accelerated pathway next to it. And the big change this year is bolded to the right, which is we tested certain cohorts on above-grade level tests. So your grade four accelerated math students are really learning fifth grade math standards. And so they took the fifth grade fast to go with it. Your fifth graders in five A, what we call the fifth accelerated class, spend the whole year learning sixth grade math. And so we test them on sixth grade. And then you're same for your seven A kids in your seventh accelerated class, they take the eighth grade exam. And so it makes the year-to-year comparison data from last year, when we didn't have this structure, very challenging. And so you can see, this actually shows the number of tests we administered by grade level. And you can see huge declines in fourth grade and seventh grade. The reason is, your fourth graders who are accelerated were taking the fifth grade exam. Your fifth graders who are accelerated were taking the sixth grade exam. And then some of your sixth graders who are ultra-accelerated and your seventh accelerated kids are taking the eighth grade exam. So your two grades that are gonna be hit the hardest as far as just looking at raw proficiency are gonna be your fourth grade and your seventh grade students because they're the ones that, um, really have your accelerated kids pulled out of that grade with no other accelerated kids testing into that grade.
Really the low-performing kids that we're watching, the lower performing kids that we're watching.
Kind of like what we used to see with eighth grade. Eighth grade was really all your non-proficient students who, um, were testing on that eighth grade exam. Now that's really been shifted down into seventh grade by the above-grade level testing. And you'll see that manifest in, in the data. Um, this slide is just showing you, um, and you may have heard it early in the year especially, a lot of parents, when their students enroll in one of these accelerated courses, they take that first progress monitor and their student may get a one or a two on it, level one or two. And the parents, and the student has never gotten a level one or two on an exam in their life. And panic sets in, and is this the right placement? Am I, you know, is this the right course for my child? We just wanted to put this here to show you that our accelerated students make tremendous growth from PM one to PM three. So you can see, like, four A in particular is a great example of this. In PM one, they started at thirteen percent proficient on that fifth grade exam. Um, by the end of the year, they'd grown seventy-six percent. And basically nine out of ten were proficient. So it's tremendous growth, especially when you compare it to the average state numbers. And so by far, most of these students were proficient by the end of the year, even though at the beginning of the year, most of them were getting level one and twos. And again, that can be very scary for students who are traditionally very successful academically. But again, I also think this teaches them to overcome adversity, to be challenged. And, um, again, gives them appropriate grade level content if it's the right course placement for them. And then even five A, our kids were enormously successful in five A. The only reason that number is plus forty-nine and not much higher is because they started the year at fifty percent proficient and they ended at ninety-nine percent proficient in five A. So, I mean, they did tremendously. So again, just context for our, for you and our parents. So this is, um, the raw results from third through fifth grade. And again, you can see, um, the, the fourth grade dip that we, um, kind of anticipate by pulling out the four A students, um, and doing that above-grade level testing. And then again, you know, fifth grade, you're pulling out all of your accelerated fifth grade students. They're taking the sixth grade exam. You'll see that kind of manifest on the next few slides. So elementary, um, looks more, it, it looks down. But you also have to remember that a lot of your most accelerated students are taking that sixth grade exam, which we don't see yet. And that sixth grade exam, if the fifth grader's taking it, still counts for their elementary school.
Right.
So, um, and those students, as you saw, were ninety-nine percent proficient on that exam. So it's a, it's a net positive for our schools. And then this is the district charter breakdown. Again, different schools will have different philosophies about accelerating students, which make year-to-year comparison data, particularly this year, uh, very challenging. I think what's kind of exciting is even with all of our accelerated students removed in fourth grade, we were still fifty-six proficient, percent proficient in math, which I think is actually pretty admirable and much higher than we expected it to be. And then this is middle school, and you can see kind of the effect of the math acceleration change really manifest here, particularly when we get to the next slide. So you'll see, uh, increases in sixth grade, a decrease in seventh, like we would predict with, again, your accelerated seventh graders being pulled out and moved into eighth grade. And then again, there's the enormous jump in eighth grade proficiency that you would expect with moving your accelerated students to the eighth grade exam. And so, um, again, you still have accelerated students taking algebra. You still have accelerated students taking geometry above that. But you, um, by kind of that above-grade level testing, it shifted a lot of achievement from the seventh grade test into the eighth grade test. And again, you see that really manifest here on the next slide because, um, that was a, a decision made in our district-operated schools primarily. And you can see the enormous swing between seventh and eighth grade. Um, but again, uh, you know, we went from being twenty-seven points under the state average in eighth grade to four points above the state average because of that, um, change in, change in above-grade level testing. Next year, this year-to-year comparison data should be much cleaner because it'll be comparison, the, we'll test the same way next year as we're testing this year. And so you'll get a much cleaner year-to-year picture. And then you have your Algebra I and geometry data. This is, um, relatively, uh, stable because of the, um, it, it really wasn't affected by any of the math acceleration changes for the state or for the district. And you can see the, um, district and charter breakdown there. Now we're onto my favorite subject, science. And as I shared with you earlier, we're very excited about our district-wide science results this year. We think that, um, we've had a tremendous year for, for, really all instruction, but especially science instruction. It was a focus of ours and, and schools really leaned into our new instructional materials, which they implemented this year as well as some new assessment systems. They use the progress monitor students. And I think it paid off, um, because we outperformed, um, state particularly at fifth and eighth. And, uh, you can see just, um, growth above the state, really, um, especially our district-operated schools. And, you know, we've had, stayed with them in biology. We had a really great eighth grade year and again, really good charter performance, um, and district performance on the fifth grade and eighth grade exams, so. Positive news in science. And again, we're anticipating a really, uh, improved district score on our, our, you know, state grading formula there. So again, testament to the continued work of our schools. And, uh, as we continue to, um, improve our science instruction, we anticipate better things. And as we continue to invest in, in STEM as a district. And then finally, we have our civics, US history, EOCs. These are given in civics, seventh slash eighth grade, and, uh, US history is typically given in eleventh grade. You can see we outperformed the state in civics. And we, uh, we grew as a district at about the same rate in both civics and US history. And then finally, um, again, positive momentum in our, in our schools. Getting, you know, continuing to progress monitor, continuing to provide professional learning to our teachers and just, um, build an infrastructure for success. So we see continued and sustained growth in our schools. So the next steps. Um, we've completed student data updates. That basically means, you know, we, we have to clean up our, our student data files with the state. Basically let the state know who was in attendance on May first. So all those, uh, students who were in attendance in that, uh, February survey window, who is still here in May essentially. So we've done all of that with the state. And then, uh, the state's deadline to release assessment results is June thirtieth. And then, um, school grades and district grades will be released shortly after. There's not a defined time period on that, but we believe it'll be shortly after, hopefully in early July. And so by the time we next meet as a, next time you meet as a board, um, I'll be able to share the results of the, of school and district grades, hopefully with you.
And, and to Ms. Felton's point, from PM one to PM three, but also I'd like to see it by school.
Yes, we'll get you the school breakdown as well.
Right, right.
This is, this is not part of the slide deck. Evan, you don't have to run back to the office and compile this for me right this second. When, when kids haven't passed, when we did the FSA, that, that was my last round of testing, um, then I had juniors and seniors, so they didn't do FAST. So I, I never did FAST as, as a teacher. So I had the FSA. Now, if they didn't pass by tenth grade, we would retest them junior and senior year. And we'd also give them the ACT, SAT, and, you know, for alternative assessment. Are we with FAST now that we've been through a couple cycles with FAST for, for ninth and tenth grade for the high school kids? Are we finding that the, they, they need more as, as? What I'm asking basically is, do we have as many kids needing to do makeup assessments for tenth or for eleventh and twelfth grade?
We, we have, from my memory, so we've been, we've been doing more and more concordant testing for alternate, alternative scores, like ACT and SAT and CLT. But from my memory, before we started kicking But from my memory, before we started kicking that in as much, the switch to FAST actually was helping us quite a bit because the, the best thing about FAST, especially for the 10th grade retake, is it's a one set, one session test. Whereas we used to have two sessions of reading and a session of writing to get an ELA score. Trying to get a kid that isn't showing up to school very much to show up for three different days is really hard.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely a struggle. And so then I, again, as an English teacher, I had kids that took the SAT or the ACT to, to get those concordant scores. And so with the, so we're having better, better results then. That's, that's why I was wondering because, because the FSA was so hard to test. That I was wanting to, wondering about that if our, if our kids are being, being able to pass things easier.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's easier to get them through on retakes because you're more likely to get a score. We still definitely need the concordant testing to get a number of our students across that.
Yeah. And we did have a lot of kids who could pass with an ACT or an SAT score, but could never pass the FSA, which was irksome as an English teacher, when I'm like, if they can do this, there's a problem with that. So, so that was one of, also is a concern as well. So thank you.
Thank you. No one else is up to speak? So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Evan, appreciate all your, your data.
Thank you for having me again.
Analyzing, it's great. Let's go to move us to item number nine, the consent items. So Mr. Chapman?
The interim superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda for the school board meeting, June 24th, 2025.
So moved.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion, a second to approve the consent items? So let's go ahead and vote. And that is approved, excuse me, those consent items are approved five to zero. All right, moving to new business discussion item pulled from consent. Mr. Chapman?
The interim superintendent recommends approval of the purchase of legal services estimating the amount of $394,000.
So moved.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion and a second discussion? I don't know if we want to go Ms. Bray first for your questions, or do you want to have an explanation from the interim superintendent or from legal? Or do you want to just go with what you got?
I'll just go with what I got. It's all right.
Mark and Roll?
Okay. When this came on the agenda, I started requesting information from Mr. Pendley about how much we pay year over year for legal fees. And this is outside legal. This isn't our internal, that's not you.
No.
And/or some of it's Mr. Dye, I guess, but not all. But generally it's not. He's our board attorney. So we just, from 22 to 25, in 22, we had three firms that we used. According to, I had Ms. Cox send this to everyone. In 23, we had three firms. In 24, we had seven firms. And then in 25, we have nine firms. So my biggest question is, how many cases were there that they were dealing with? And, and then we'll go from there. I mean, if you look at 24, that's a huge chunk of money that we spent. And I'm, I'm guessing I know what that one's about. It's when Ms. DiAgostino left and Mr. Dye jumped in and we were really trying to dive through a lot of things there between superintendent and attorney at the same time then. So, so that's what my, that's why I pulled it. I wanted to know, why have we gone from three firms to nine firms in that short amount of time? And why, is it the caseload? Is it? I'll let you expand now if you want.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Board members, thank you. Ms. Bray, the reference in 2025 for nine firms, one of those is the divisive administrative hearings. That's, that is something that is a charge of $910 that only is for your administrative hearing. DOA charges us for those. The Doran, Fox, Sims, Wolf and Yun charge was 200. That's for a, a contested garnishment case. They're the only firm in the state that I know that handles contested garnishments. It was a flat fee, one-off, $200 charge. Mr. Dye's firm in representing, so this does not reflect the board's work with Mr. Dye's firm. This is only his outside counsel. So those would be largely property matters involving easements, that sort of thing that Mr. Dye's firm has expertise in. That's 14,400, 14,820 this fiscal year. There are, is one charge for $2,250 for Trask Daganoff. That is a firm that was hired for a specific, the airport hangar contract negotiation that we did with SRQ in order to put that contract in appropriate language for the Economic Development Council and those sorts of things. It was a specialized case. Largely, we use the same law firms that we have before, Blaylock Walters for general liability, the Johnson Jackson firm for employment matters. The Rob Robinson attorney is there for that one particular case that was on appeal that has garnered so much legal fees over those two years. So it's very difficult to assess over time, how you want to split up your outside legal fees. Largely, we look at firms with expertise in arbitration, grievances, obviously litigation, appellate work. This does not include charges for ESE work. That is Stefan and Spelman that we use for ESE or for the risk management department. Those are our general liability claims for fleet, slip and falls, that sort of thing through the bracket firm. So those charges accumulate over time depending on what litigation that you have and are largely driven by one particular case that was litigated for over a decade. That was a mandate just came down from the second district court of appeals day before yesterday. And the trial court has granted the board summary judgment motion in that case. That case should be over pending appeal.
Pending appeal again.
Pending, pending if they appeal, correct?
But that order also says.
Have they filed for appeal?
No appeal's been filed yet.
Okay, gotcha.
Just came out yesterday.
If they do, okay.
Right, just came out. Okay, so thanks for the summary on that because I was like, what the heck is going on? Where are we going to so many different firms? But again, I wanted to talk with the rest of the board. I mean, we're spending an awful lot of money for legal fees outside of what we use our board attorney and our district attorney for. I don't, I think it's probably worthy of having a discussion about having our own litigator. I mean, if you look at these fees, it would almost pay for a litigator to be on our staff. Because when, when we're being sued, it's, they're not suing the individual or anything. It's the school board. We're always the defendant. So that's where I'm, that's why I'm looking at this, 190,000 just in 2025. And that's not counting the two legal experts on our board here.
I, I'm not an attorney. I did watch Suits.
Did you play one on TV?
I loved Suits. And I think that, I think there's some valid, like thought about the, the fees. Unfortunately, in an organization like ours, we are going to get sued. I mean, that just is what it is. I mean, slip and falls and obviously we don't, no district has perfect employees and things happen. But I think the, and again, the attorneys can obviously weigh in on having one litigator. I don't, I don't think it's about the one, I don't think we have the staff, the paralegals, et cetera, to take on, I mean, we've seen the caseload that we've, like, we've seen the spreadsheet. I mean, at one point, I think it was like 28, 29. Like there's no way one attorney is going to be, to be up, and again, I'm not the attorney, but I just, I don't see one attorney being able to do that. I think that even law offices themselves, and I know some really good defense attorneys, et cetera, like they, the main attorney is not even, it's a paralegal's that have multiple ones and they have, I, I don't see one litigator being able to do it. And I, and I also would question if there's one litigator out there that can do every single one as good as specialized attorneys and firms can do. So some, some are better at slip and falls, some are better at worker comp, some are better at this, some are better at that. When you have one, I don't know if we're going to get a renaissance litigator. I mean, you may get somebody who knows enough about each one, but it's not going to be the best at each one. So I'll give it to attorneys just to rebuttal that. And then I have Mr. Tatum and Mr. Kennedy here to let up.
Mr. Chair, I might just add to your comments. $190,000 is, is 10 months of FY '25 right now. We, we haven't closed out May and June. So it, it is certainly going to be over 200,000. But to my, to your point, largely we select law firms based and assign cases based on subject matter expertise. So we don't have someone who just does all of the cases. These are not all litigation. Some of it is arbitration, some of it is appearance before the Public Employee Relations Commission, that sort of thing, doing, doing different kinds of work. So as much as I would love to have a litigator in-house to do this, it would be difficult to break even at 200,000, even after you consider expenses, salary benefits, plus you would need the support of administrative staff and as you mentioned, a paralegal, which it's no secret that we've advertised now three times for a paralegal and I've been unsuccessful in get, in recruiting someone. That's, that's one of my goals for this year is to, to increase the capacity of department through having a paralegal. Largely, the things that are not shown on this sheet that you incur is the cost of, of going through each one of our contracts. It's very extensive contract work, a lot of labor and employment work just in advising, not, not labor and employment cases, but the, the whole process of collective bargaining, having a lawyer attend as part of your collective bargaining team is a separate expense that's not shown on here. So those are the things that complicate, just, just having a lawyer come in and do all of your litigation, even if they had the expertise in the subject matter areas, I don't think you're going to be able to, to see a cost savings at even a 200, $220,000 level.
Mr. Chair?
It's an interesting idea. I mean, I've often wondered if we should hire our own, our own board attorney. I think the most persuasive argument for me though is the idea of expertise. Like we, you know, you'd have to get a jack of all trades or as Mr. Cho said, a renaissance man. And that's my concern with it, Ms. Bray, is that you wouldn't be able to, a litigator wouldn't necessarily be an expert in contract law, employment law, all of those things.
Right.
That would be my concern.
I'll let everyone else talk now.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, no, I just had a couple of thoughts of a way forward if, Mrs. Bray is, and you haven't said this, I'm just guessing. If you're not comfortable with the number, is that maybe we could approve a lower number of a threshold? And then if the time came further in this fiscal year, the fiscal year coming up, then we could just do approvals as we needed to. Also, one thing to keep in mind, if we, is if we don't spend this, you know, maximum approved, it always, it obviously goes back into the general fund. But historically, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but historically, this is, this is, 395,000 is, is elevated, somewhat elevated, I'll put it that way. But from my memory, it's outside legal is, Mr. Dye, you've been here probably almost as long as I have, 200 to 300,000 a year generally. And what is, what is the current rate for somebody doing public agency work, an outside attorney? It used to be 215 or an hour or something like that?
Yeah.
Is it now?
It's probably more around 250 now.
Okay, which would make sense, yeah, with inflation and whatnot.
Some of these, we have to negotiate that when we get some of these real specialized firms, because they don't want to do, they don't want to discount it that much. But the, but the firms that on a regular basis do government agency work will usually agree to that.
Okay. Yeah. So it's just a, an alternate idea. I mean.
Right.
You, you didn't bring that up, I just thought that's something that's.
Right, I was going to wait to see what everyone else had to say about, you know, having internal, because we've talked about it before. And, and the biggest sticker shock is one firm gets the biggest portion. One firm gets the biggest portion and I have no idea how many cases they handle for us. Yeah.
It's, it's dozens and that's, that's been the practice in the past. And one of the things that we've worked on is trying to build what I call depth of bench so that, for example, with, with this, that particular firm, we were thinking that we were going to be in trial all of, of July and we would have several cases with one lawyer who, although she's very capable and, and a good lawyer, that's, that's too much to ask. So we were trying to build the capacity to, to have cases spread out over, over a couple of different firms. And I would like to do that for general liability as well. We're working toward that. But we had some complications that we were in anticipation of litigation this summer that now is, is not going to happen, but at the time, we didn't know that.
So you're still comfortable, you still think we need the 395?
Based on his, again, because these numbers are so spread out over.
Right, I mean, that's huge.
Well, we went from almost 800,000 in FY '24 to under, we're going to be right around, let's call it 220 for FY '25. And then you go back 288. So I looked at that number and then the 2022 year with 145,000, I tried to come up with a estimated range in between that and, and kind of hit, hit a median at around 400. I, again, this is for, it's, it's like coming up with an hourly rate. You, you mentioned 250, Mr. Dye, that is, we only have one firm that I think is at 245. Everyone else is 200 or below. So we're getting good hourly rates, but if you're, you're being charged for two hours for something that only takes 10 minutes, it doesn't matter what your hourly rate is, it's how much time you're putting on a file. So we, we try to look at what our expenses are going to be and we do have a couple of notices from, for, for litigation that we think is going to be coming up this year. So we want to be prepared and not have to come back and ask for additional dollars for that. It was a balancing question of, of what is reasonable based on historic spending. If Mr., to Mr. Kennedy's point, around, you know, 150, 200,000, 300,000 a year, we were concerned about those, those cases that may be coming up this year and didn't want to have to come back. But as long as we are authorized to engage the firms that we have received engagement letters from, hopefully we'll be able to come under, you know, I'd, I'd love to be around 200 again, but I don't want to underestimate and then not, not bring you a, a number that was within budget. And for a lot of this is for budgeting purposes as well.
Right, right, I get that. Well, the, the biggest thing.
I would like zero.
Yeah. Well, the biggest thing for me was I wanted to hear the different firms, what their specialties were, because I didn't know that we were actually using one. I think it was probably brought to us maybe for the airport. We talked about it, I think when we were doing a project that we had to get a special attorney to help walk us through that. I remember that briefly, kind of a bell ringing. But like Robinson, Rob Robinson, what kind of work do they do for us?
That's the reimbursement of the former superintendent Mills. Uh, that's the reimbursement of the former superintendent Mills case.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I gotcha. And then, um, okay. And then Gray Robinson?
That's employment.
That's all employment issues?
All employment litigation, yes.
All employment litigations, okay. And then our risk management, that's a, that's your budget, too. Is that included?
It is not included in this, it's not my budget. Risk management reports to me for supervisory, but we have not fully incorporated risk management, workers' compensation, all of that under the legal department at this point. I would like to work toward that because I think it makes for greater efficiencies. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, the district's past practice of using the Bracken Law Firm, which has been very successful in general liability matters, um, a-again, you run the risk of what, what if something happens to that one lawyer? Yeah, I would like to see better depth of bench for general liability cases as well. But if, if that were brought more fully under the legal department, I would have, uh, better control of that, and we're working toward that.
Okay, okay, and that's basically why I pulled it. I wanted to get more understanding of what we pay for. And, I mean, I understand property, uh, garnishment, um, employee issues, the airport thing. So I understand all that, but I didn't know any details. I mean, we get the little spreadsheet that you give us, and I haven't gotten an updated one in the last couple of briefings. So hopefully, we'll have that next briefing, so we can see where we are on that. But I'm glad one of them, the big one, is behind us and we can move on. And I wanna thank you so much for, so I really don't have a motion, I just really wanted to, to talk about it.
Before I go to Ms. Feld, Mr. Di?
Yeah, well, it's great you're keeping an eye on it. The, I just wanted to wrap it up by saying the environment's not getting any better um, on legal problems. I think it's actually heading the other direction. And I don't think that's a surprise. This is one of the biggest entities, actually in the state, not just in Manti County. And, uh, it's complex and there's lots of exposure. We dodged a bullet this legislative session, the increase of sovereign immunity did not go through. We thought it was, we actually thought it was going, had a good chance of going through. It was gonna raise sovereign immunity up to a million dollars.
One million per, per occurrence and two million per claim, so.
So our sovereign immunity was going for two hundred thousand shield to one million, so I think what activity that would generate. So it's, it's also just, it's a complex area of the law, as y'all know. So with, with school functions and school law, um, not just every, any attorney can do it. And, uh, so you, you do have a history of getting great legal representation. And, uh, but it's, yeah, I don't think it's, it's gonna go down, um, is my perception.
Ms. Feld?
Um, I just wanted to say that I was comfortable with the three ninety-five. Um, it's lower than we spent last time, this last year around, go around. Um, and, and it does make it easier for, uh, for our attorneys to be able to proceed if things come up without us having to, you know, wait for a board meeting, get approval, add delays to future litigation issues, um, as they come up. And again, it does go, if, if we don't, we don't spend it, it's, it's not gone, it's, it's still, still in there, so. That was, that was all I wanted to say.
So we still need a motion to pass it, correct?
We, we have a motion, we have a motion in a, uh, in a second, we still have to vote on the item. That was our discussion portion of it.
Right.
So yes, we still have to vote on, uh, this approval of purchase legal services in estimated amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand annually.
Watch those invoices.
And that passes five to zero. All right, um, we're in at an hour and a half. Board members, do you need to take a break?
I would.
Yeah?
Five minutes.
Five-minute recess?
Five minutes.
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess. All right, welcome back. Moving on to item number twelve, uh, new business non-consent items. Uh, item number twelve point one, uh, Mr. Chapman?
The interim superintendent recommends the approval of advertising a notice of intent to amend the code of student conduct and to set a public hearing on the proposed changes at the board meeting scheduled for July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion and a second, and I know we workshop this, uh,
Correct.
last time, so there's really nothing more, uh, it's been posted, so this is just to, uh, have it out there, be thirty days, hear any public comments, um, anyone out there that, that wants to give back, uh, give us feedback on the code of conduct, please do, and then come to the public hearing on the twenty-ninth. No board members that up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of advertising of notice of intent to amend the code of conduct. And that passes five to zero. Item number twelve point two, um, Mr. Chapman?
Uh, the interim superintendent recommends approval of advertising a notice of intent to amend the student progression plan and setting a public hearing on the proposed amendments at the board meeting scheduled for July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, same thing. Um, we workshop this, is the, the, the student progression plan. Um, and anybody has any public comments about these, please come out and to the public hearing or let us know before July twenty-ninth. Let's go and vote on the approval of advertising notice of intent to amend the student progression plan, and that passes five to zero. Item number three under, or, uh, yeah, item number three under new business, uh, Mr. Chapman?
The interim superintendent recommends authorization to amend charter schools' contracts to share a portion of the sales sur, surtax with qualified charter schools beginning in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. And I know we workshop this and, um, talked about this in our, in, in multiple workshops. Been a while to get on the meeting, had to push it back, um, several times. Ms. Bray, you're up to speak.
I just wanted to say, uh, to the charters, there's a reason I wore red today. And I wanna thank you for everything that you do for our district. Obviously, the data that we reviewed earlier, uh, with the DAC, you make an improvement in our district. Although not on every level, but, you know, we have wins and loses and everything. So, uh, I just wanna say, uh, I look forward to seeing what you're gonna do in the next few years with this, and, uh, I just wanna do the right thing.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, I, um, my comment's gonna be a little bit longer. Only because the, the inclusion of the debt service caught me off guard a little bit because I, I didn't recall that being a factor in the earlier conversations. I think the last, the last conversation at a workshop, thank you, yeah, that we had was May, was May, about a month ago, I think it was May twenty-third or s- about a month ago was the last, was that the last conversation we had on the topic?
May twenty?
Yes.
Until it hit, thank you, Kev, um, until it hit, uh, this agenda. And so board members, if my memory is faulty, correct me, but my memory was that we were looking, and I just, I did some notes from, uh, some, some of the documents we had at that meeting. So for, I'll just talk about twenty-five, twenty-six, the upcoming fiscal year. The, the half cent was going to raise, um, about fifty-six million, fifty-five million nine oh six, nine hundred and six thousand. Um, and the conversation that we had was that we would share that at a fifty percent rate, correct? And, but then, like I said, the debt service, uh, in, in the board work, the debt service is added. Our council has, um, told me the reasons why, our bond and attorney Di, you can walk me or correct me if, but our, our bond council has basically told us, you have to adhere to the bond covenant first, which is to pay us back, or to pay the, to pay the bondholders first.
That income stream was pledged to pay for the bonds, yes.
Okay, yeah, which, okay, so that's, um, I appreciate that explanation. So that takes us down instead of fifty-five million nine hundred and six thousand, that takes us to forty-three million two hundred and twenty-five thousand in the total pot of money for twenty-five, twenty-six. So at fifty percent, um, that number obviously is, well, the charters, I don't wanna say fifty percent, but,
Yeah.
The charter share, exactly, the charter shares, twenty-ish percent, twenty and some change percent. You guys remember from that workshop, the look of, I put on both your faces when I realized, like, wow, I'm really, I might have gone too far here, but, but I appreciate the feedback from, from you guys as well. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any appetite on the board, because we're taking a slice out for debt service, instead of doing 50, 60, 80, 100, is there any appetite on the board to, we can leave it at 50 for this coming fiscal year, because that's what our team is counting on, that's what, you know, the charter teams are building their, their budgets and so forth, but for '26-'27 going forward, I would make the suggestion that if we're going to throw in, if we're going to add in debt service, and by bond covenant we have to, instead of doing 60, 80, 100, why don't we just go to 80, 100, 100? Because we're essentially, we're taking something away that we promised on May 23rd, I'm suggesting we give something back. I haven't done the exact numbers, I think in our boardwork, it says the, the collection goes up about 4% per year. Yeah, sales tax revenues have historically increased 4% per year. I mean, if you guys remember from that workshop, I wanted to, I appreciate the compromise of a graduated schedule, I really do, I think that's a nice middle ground for, you know, both, both sides of this debate, but I would like to see us take a step back toward the charters and take a step back toward fairness and equity, since we're, we didn't, we didn't plan in that debt service reduction at our last conversation, so that's my, that's my, and I know we don't want to
Tatum and then
negotiate them a fly, but that's my suggestion.
Ms. Tatum?
I'd just like to hear Ms. Sellers' opinion on Mr. Kennedy's proposal, on what your thoughts are.
So we have been, when we ended up needed to be able to look at proportioning those particular sources or construction projects and maintenance projects that those funds were going to do, we had readjusted it again, we would, if we were to change that in year 60, '26, '27, '27, '28, we would have to revisit where that landed as far as if other projects that was to be funding that sales tax would then either have to get moved or eliminated as well, too. But we walked away with those percentages, so that's what we are able to work up at this time. We have planned and put together a new plan, knowing what was left out of that sales tax, so it would take some adjustment in that '26, '26, '27 year and '27, '28 to shore that distribution out, if that were the case of the board.
Yeah, no, if I may, I totally agree, and that's why, for, for the upcoming fiscal year, let's not make any changes, everybody's already, ball's already rolling on everybody's budgets.
Especially with, we have like contracts, for the '25-'26, so much has already gotten started in play.
Right.
That's what made have that happen right there in '25-'26, change, not, not just shifting around budgets, but commitments already in certain contracts and stuff that you couldn't move, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, fair enough.
So we're looking a bit further out, and, you know, if it ends up being that, when we go through that capital review, if it ends up being something that can't get funded and it still is a desired project, maybe it's something that goes on the future financing for, for another, you know, the, another COPs, you know, that kind of a thing, where the high school's going, you know, that kind of a thing, so.
Yeah, and we'll have to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry.
So you said 80 and 100, and 80 would be '26, '27, and 100 and '27, '28?
Correct, yeah, yeah, keep the 50% for the upcoming fiscal year, '26, '27 go to 80 instead of 60, '27, '28 go to 100, and then it would be 100, you know, I'm basically moving
You're moving it up a year.
Moving it up one year.
All right.
Mr. Tatum?
So the, I mean, to make a, an informed, really informed decision, we'd have to do all these numbers again, in a way, right?
I can bring the capital
How many millions of dollars is it going to cost the capital budget?
I can give you an idea.
Yeah, how many, how
Well, it, let me just go, the '25-'26 year, we were, the numbers that we already saw at the May 23rd workshop were 55,906,000 would be raised, we are, according to the boardwork, we are going to take out 12,681 for debt service, 20, I'll just use 20%, it's an easy number, so that is, 1.2, that's 2.4 million dollars that would have gone to the charters that is now not going to go to them, because we're paying debt service first, so that's, that's in one year. Well, well, I'm not, I'm not even suggesting any changes for '25-'26, so by going from, sorry, let's just say that debt service is the same, just, just for sake of argument.
Yeah, we have, we have the amortization schedule through the rest till 2032, that's already set for the sales tax bond, and that maximum, that 12,681, 500, that is our maximum annual debt service, so you can just apply that same amount, as you keep going down, you'll always be capturing the max, that's the highest one.
Okay.
So they essentially are getting, the sales tax brings in about 56 million in revenue, is projected to bring in about 56 million in revenue, is that what, am I reading that correctly, for '25-'26 school year?
Correct.
Okay, so the charters are supposed to get, in that year, they're supposed to get 50% of that, so that is 28 million, so now, well, no, they're supposed to get 20% of, 50% of 20%, right? That's what I'm trying to do, is math, so that, so they get 20, so they get half of their 20%, so that's 56 million times 20%.
Now, minus the debt service.
Well, I'm just saying how much it was going to be, times point, times point five, so they were going to get 5.6 million this year, right?
I believe 4
Is that
4.4.
Oh, 4.8?
4.4.
Right.
That was before the debt service or after the debt service? I didn't know, if you do it the other way around.
Don't, don't hold me to that, because I don't see the debt service taken off, this is, this could be an old, old estimation I'm looking at.
Chad, if I may, the notes that I have, originally, it was, the 20% number was 9,348, 60% of that would be 5,608. That was the original number that we talked about at the May 23rd workshop.
The 4.32 is if you take the 12 million away for the capital, what we call that, so the difference, so it was 5.1, what was it, 5.6?
20% of 43,000, 43 million, is 8.6 million, so that's, that's the 20, theoretically at 100%, that's what charters will get eventually at 100% is 8.6.
And half of that.
Half of that, which is what we were saying in '25-'26, is 4.3.
Right, correct.
Okay, so that
So we're, so we're saying that in, within, what Mr., what Mr. Kennedy is saying is basically within two years, we're going to get to where it's 100%, which is roughly, let's just say, 9 million by the time we get there. So it fast forwards us by a couple of years, which is like 2 or 3 million.
That's what I'm wondering, is this going to cost us 5 million, 10 million, couple million, it sounds like it's going to cost us a couple million?
I mean, every
It's going up.
Don't worry about '25-'26, you got to worry about
By, by the time it's at 100%, that's 13.7 million.
Yeah, at that point.
At that point.
Just moving it up one year for 100% is going to be 2 or 3 million right there in itself.
Yeah, in, in each of the years, I mean, you're roughly, it's somewhere around 5 million between the two years.
Yeah.
But I hear you saying, Ms. Sellers, that, you know, we could possibly make it up with COPs instead of, instead of borrowing 100 and
Of a project that maybe was being picked up by the sales tax, if it's still something to be done, you know.
Are we doing any COPs in the fall for anything?
Not, not, we're not projecting this fall, it's a, we would probably be doing a closing, I'll let Joe be able to speak to that, too, probably more issuing it so that it occurs in like November, where we're doing a pricing more or less about the same time as last year.
But, but are we doing, but we are doing some COPs in the fall, though, when I say doing that, we're going to start the process.
We'll start the process, yes.
So, as I remember the COPs discussions, there was some comments made, maybe by you or by somebody that, there was, there was a maximum that we could borrow, like 150, but we were projecting 140, but then we left a little wiggle room for extra things that we might need, right, that, that we had a, like I said, we had a maximum amount, but we're not borrowing the maximum amount, but we're, we're borrowing 95% of it, but we could borrow 97%, and there was a little wiggle room in there, is that, is that, is that true?
So, so one of the projects that we were looking at was the high school, while, there's a discussion on what that would look like, I think the max at this point with that station count of 1,200 was like 140 million, that would then get, get decreased, if you had another project added in like Moody at 30 million, there would be your max 170 million, unless you also adjusted down or changed what the high school was going to look like, and that more than fits to sit within that we're able to borrow, this district is still sitting in a, in a very good capacity to be able to, to take on the, another certificates of participation in that same realm.
I guess what I'm asking, though, is that, if we need to borrow 4 or 5 million extra dollars, we have the ability.
Yes.
If we wanted to do this, and it's going to cost us, sounds like 4 or 5 million dollars, if we accelerated the payment plan to the charter, so to speak, it would cost us 4 or 5 million dollars, and, and we could put that on the end of, in a COPs or something, and
A project that was
Which means we'd have to borrow more money, and we have to pay more interest on it. And then, what about the bond council, you said you had, you had some conversations with them, does that play in?
We did, they reviewed this, they reviewed both the executive summary and the procedures, and, and they provided their recommendations, which is what we ended up changing in, or mending in the language that y'all had first seen and then had it updated, we had those additions added to this paperwork based on their recommendations.
What if we don't, but it sounds like we're talking about not going with their recommendations, I mean, that's what Mr. Kennedy's proposal is.
Well, their recommendation was not in, in any way talking about the distribution shared to the charter schools, it was, it was talking about how much, and, and basically the order in which you would arrive at to obtain the available revenue to consider in your, in the share.
So we would still, Mr. Kennedy, are you still saying that we would take out our bond, our, our debt service before we pay them and just accelerate what we owe them, or were you, were you suggesting that we not take into consideration our debt service?
No, we have to, we have to take into consideration.
That's what I was thinking, sure, okay. All right, so it's going to probably cost us 4 or 5 million, and we can probably do that, if we need the money, we could borrow it through COPs, and it's not going to hurt us, put a big dent in our capital fund. Mr. Rinaldi, how about you, are you have any, or Mr. Chapman, anybody, I mean, you're
Can I, can I jump in just real quick, and ask, and just, just say something real quick? I think they have not heard any of these numbers that Mr. Kennedy is bringing up, I think this specifically is talking about, or we could change this specifically to '25- '26, and, and come back to this, because I, this is just me personally, I think we're talking about a lot of money and a lot of, lot of different buckets that we're choosing to pull from, when you talk about COPs, they got to say where the revenue's coming from, et cetera, et cetera, and we haven't had a chance to run numbers, I'm not, I'm not saying no to what you're saying, I'm just saying, I don't think it's the right time right this minute to do that, I, I think we're all in agreement about the 50% this next year, I don't think anyone wants to jump that forward, right? So I think, I think for '25-'26, we know we want 50%, I'm not saying no to moving it potentially from 60 to 75 and moving it up quicker, I would be absolutely against it if we're doing this on the fly without us knowing what we're, and we just didn't do a budget process, you know, we had to go back and change our capital project before, so I would be against us doing it on the fly, we got to pay our, the, the bonds, so I, I, I would, I would, that's all I'm saying is, I mean, I'll let everybody obviously talk, but I think we've got to have, we got to make a smarter decision than this, and so, that's, that's, that would be my opinion is, let's do the 50%, and then we'll tackle this again 2, 3 months from now, or whatever, and, and let them look at it, Mr. Chapman, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great to have a win, and, and, you know, for all of us tonight, if, and so maybe off, what you just said, Mr. Board Chair, is, you know, voting on just the specific next fiscal year, and, and, you know, pledging the 50% and that, and that, and then let us work, we have a July 22nd board meeting, also a July 29th board meeting, that will give us time to crunch some numbers, so that we can then come back, so at least '25-'25 can get authorized tonight, and then we could come back, again, this is all with legal counsel here, but we can come back in the 22nd or 29th of July with a longer term type situation that it could be along the lines of what, what you all are talking about, that we could, we could work on.
That was my concern, that's why I'm asking all these questions, like, if we're going to do this on the fly, like you said, well, how much is it going to cost us, and when are we going to do it, and what's, and what's Mr. Rinaldi's cost, and what HVAC systems are we not going to buy, you know, I'd like to know that information, so I kind of like your, your ideas, so I'll, I'll make a motion to amend the motion that we approve the 50%.
We have other
We have some other
Sorry, I, I would like to get this out there, I, I'm going to go with Mr. Choate on this, I, this, doing this on the fly, I think is irresponsible, I feel that we spend so much time as a board talking about, well, cutting, cutting borrowing, not borrowing so much money, not buying this, not doing that, and, and we have projects that we need to get done, I am not in favor of having to go borrow more money to do this, we already had money earmarked, we didn't actually have to start giving sales tax funds until the next one in 2032, I believe, but we're doing it anyway, we're not required to, we're doing it anyway, as a board, we've chosen to do this, and, and as, as our charter school folks have told us, they're, the charter school kids are 20% of our, our district population of schools, but we are responsible for the other 80%, and we are 100% responsible for those other 80% of those kids. Our charter schools have boards of their own, some of them have very large balances, not all of them, some of them have very small balances, but some of them have very large balances, we support the, the issues with buildings that, of charter schools, of some of the charter schools ourselves, and, and I am concerned that we are rushing into, and, and of course, this is, this is a thing you'll hear from me all the time, I don't like to be rushed, I feel like we are rushing into giving out money that we don't know that we are going to have, we had this whole legislate, this last circus of a legislative session, conversations of getting rid of sales tax, getting rid of property tax, what happens if that comes around again? I mean, that, that's our millage, if they decide to get rid of the property tax, you know, we're going to, we're going to be in trouble, because we need to think ahead, and I am not in favor of rushing through this today, I'm, I'm really not in favor of changing what we've already planned at all, just to put that out there, but, you know, I, I feel like we really need to slow down. The things that are happening at our legislative level, we've never faced before in this state, I, nobody has ever anticipated a 105-day legislative session when it's supposed to be 60 days, we, we need to remember that things are happening that don't normally, normally happen, we are having a new normal, and, you know, we talk about, we have this wonderful fund balance, and we've got this money sitting here, and this money sitting here, and, and we should spend it more with the kids and more on the students, and we need to remember that those 80% of kids, we're responsible for, you know, that is, that is our job, we are not the boards of the charter schools, we are the boards of the, the regular public schools, the district schools, and while, you know, they absolutely have needs, the charter schools do, they have needs, and I'm not discounting that, I am concerned about future finances, Sarasota is cutting things that they didn't think they would ever have to cut, we're doing really well, we're lucky. We're doing really well, we're lucky. You know, go to FSBA and talk to any people from half the districts out there, they're, they're cutting staff, they're cutting things, they're not building things, they're having to, you know, deal with things they never thought they were going to have to. And I am concerned that they, that may be us in a year or two. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. To, you want to go back, Ms. Bray?
Go ahead. Well, when we workshop this, there was no mention of debt service fees, was there? I, I emailed Ms. Cox and asked her if she had that little sheet that we were looking at with all of the different years and a percentage that you had created. And I can't find it in here. And I thought I had it in my little binder, but I don't.
In the conversations that we had in May, we didn't bring this up. It was, it is the act of removing the debt service before it goes to charter school is something that the district does do in regards to the 1.5 mil. We've been doing it ever since the charter schools do get that proportion. So, we understand that practice. It didn't occur to us when we were having that conversation to remind that. It was our bond council that, that definitely confirmed that we needed to be considering it for this because we had bond covenants related to what the sales tax would be used for. So, it isn't a, an item that we, we talked about and disclosed when we brought that up. It was just something that was not in our radar, but it is a practice that we completely understand because we do it with the 1.5 mil that's shared with the charter schools.
So, it just kind of slipped our mind that we do that with the 1.5, but we didn't?
We already do, well, we hadn't started doing distributions of the sales tax. So, it was, it was, it just wasn't, it wasn't on our radar to be able to bring that up. But it, but it, once we realized that, oh, we already using some of this revenue for those debt covenants, we included that. We got a hold of bond council. We made sure we had that. Things were moving a little fast to be able to make sure we had that information put together, but that's why we took the time to vet it through the attorneys that we use related to those bond covenants to do that.
Okay. And to Mr. Tatum's point about how much it's going to cost us, I don't remember the workshop or one of the meetings, I mean, you were ready to, let's just give it to them. We got this much in our capital budget, let's just, let's go ahead and just give it to them now. And now we're worried about that 4 million. Yeah, I, I'd like to see the data, to be honest with you. But I am, I'll side with Mr. Kennedy on giving them speeding up the share proportion more because this isn't just, this didn't land on our, landed at our feet. It started in 2016 and it's been a problem, in my opinion, since. Because I watched that meeting and that, it just dropped. Nobody else picked it up. And I don't know why. The board maybe was waiting on the superintendent at the time. I'm thinking the way I came up away from that, watching that video was, they were basically waiting on superintendent. And I don't know if the charters knew that they needed to chime in at the time and why it took from 16 to now.
Well, it didn't take from 16 to now, there was a share of the, of the sales, that's where that block grant had come from.
Right, right, I understand.
And so, that, the district did share.
But it was never codified. It was never codified this way.
It wasn't proportioned, it wasn't proportioned.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, that whole thing, I mean, when that vote happened in 16 and then again, it was never really brought to the board to say, give them their share. It was a, okay, let's just give them a block grant kind of thing. That's the way it felt to me over the years, is what I saw. So, I would, maybe we'll let somebody do the amendment to this item to do the 50% for this year, less the debt services, and then bring back the numbers to us to escalate the gradual rate of which they get to the 100%.
Mr. DiHata?
Yeah, I think there's already a motion on the table.
The motion on the table is to approve what's in front of us. I don't know, my question was going to be to you is, if we're going to change anything inside of, of that board work where there's financial impact. I don't think we have to because I think we can change that whenever we want. I mean, I think as a board, we could come back next year and say, scratch it all and bring up to not do anything, right? I mean, so I don't think we have to follow what the, this financial impact says for us to follow. I think we all want to for this year. I'm saying I don't think we need to do a re, a re-amendment and all that kind of stuff.
No, I think, I agree. I think what's on the tables is, is the, is, is the addendum, the procedures for sales tax revenue share that was presented by the staff. And I think you can change that in the future if you want to.
Moving, yeah. If we want to go to 100 next month, whatever.
And I was just going to add to Ms. Bray's comments that, and it was just, and it was just said by Ms. Sellers that, that there was the block grant process for distributing sales tax when it, when it first, when it, when it was first approved by the voters. And what she referred to, the 1.5 mil, when, when this, there is a state statute on that. So, there, there isn't a statute on that, what you're dealing with right here. So, that's why there's kind of a void of how to do this, you're having to invent how to do it.
Gray area.
You had the block grant, so you had that construct and, but you're doing something different this time. But you didn't have like the structure of a, of a state law to just follow. And the 1.5 mil, which, which is the mil, it's not SRTACs. But it did, it does create a little process that the state passed for sharing revenue with charters. And it, right in the statute, it says deduct your debt service first. So, that's, that's kind of the model. And I think it was, of course, it was not, it was deducted in the block grant process as well.
That's what I'm asking, that's the next question, was it deducted in the block?
So, it wasn't talked about, you're right, when, when, you know, we're trying to come up with a plan, but deducting the debt service, that's, that's what you use to get your financing is the flow of cash from taxes. And that's why you don't have to do mortgages and things like that. So, so that's, that's how the state is saying do it with the, with the mil. And, and when they implemented that wall and started sharing with the charters, they actually started with 20% and worked from 20%, 30, 40. So, that's, so the 50 is pretty aggressive, actually, what y'all are agreeing to do. So, that's just kind of interesting. So, they, they, they did it also on a gradual basis, starting at 20%, so.
Okay.
That's all.
So, Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, one more thing. You know, I, I think we're not being aggressive enough, Mr. Dottie, to use your, to use your term. We got to keep in a couple of things in mind. The charter schools have received zero the past two years. There, I, I do, I, I hear where the board is and I've heard a lot of very valid things. So, I don't, I'm not, I don't intend to debate, but the reason I want to bring it up is because in this board work, that second to last paragraph finishes with shared distributions that'll start at 50 in 25, 26, 60 the following year, 80 in 27, 28, and 100% thereafter. Now, if this document on the board work is not binding, then, or Chad, like you said, we could just come back and redo it next month if we wanted to. But this, and I've said this before at previous workshops, this is just for me about basic fairness. This is, Heather, all your budget concerns and your legislature concerns are very, very valid, but as we've all set up here before, the charter kids are our kids too. And we have not been sharing this money in an equitable way. And what I'm suggesting tonight is, I feel is not even getting to equity yet, but we're trying to. But I understand, nobody wants to do this on the fly and, and I, I can empathize with that. But we're talking over the next two years, we're going to raise at least 110 million in half-cent sales tax revenue and we're talking about four or five million dollars. So, yeah, the process may feel like it's rushed tonight, but let's not be penny wise and pound foolish because this is a large community of parents and kids and who we're going to need, who we want, not, not that we need them on our side, we want them on our side. We're all on the same team here in support of all of the pre-K through 12th grade kids in this district. So, while I do understand that this feels like it's happening quickly because we can't talk outside of the meeting, I can't shoot everybody an email on Friday afternoon and be like, hey, what do y'all think of this idea? So, I had to pop it on you tonight. So, I, I understand it does feel rushed, but, but frankly, I feel like it's not even, I feel like what I'm suggesting is not even enough. But that's, but that's why we're aboard of five and the majority can rule and I'll be, and I'll, and I'll support whatever the majority wants to do. But I will continue to advocate for, for that fairness for all of our kids, which I know you guys are interested in too. I don't mean to, I don't mean to imply that you're not, but we're just.
We get it.
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
No, and I was done, period, I'm done, so.
No, no, I, I mean, I agree with you about the fairness, but in all fairness as well, we've got a staff that we've got to take care, we've got to do the right thing for the staff too. And, and I know it's only 4 million, this and that, whatever, but I just, I, I'm absolutely on board with looking at this again. I just want to make sure we get something now done right now.
I agree.
But I'm, I'm saying we can always go back and, and let's look at the numbers and go back and look at, how can we, what does it look like, you know, expediting it to 100%? I, I think we owe that to our staff to be able to let them go do that instead of doing on the fly. Mr. Tatum, you're up.
Yep.
Sure. Just a couple more quick comments. I guess you're right, Ms. Bray was, yeah, given their fair share of the money, but the debt, the whole issue of the debt issue, the whole debt payment thing made me rethink a few things and that we have to do that, we owe that money and that affects our bond council. And I had a conversation with Mr. Penley, it could raise interest rates. I mean, when we just start sending more money away, right, then that reduces the amount of money that we have to pay our debts and to borrow money and it could affect our, maybe not our credit rating, but at least the, or maybe it could, or the.
Well, if we're going against bond covenants and stuff like that, it would change your rating, it would, it would change how you could get funding for future contracts if you went against that.
That's maybe why I'm rethinking it a little bit. Not, not that we shouldn't give some money to them, but how much? And maybe rethink that a little bit just so, because it's, it's true as I think about what I said in the, or what my opinion was in the workshop. And then the second thing is, is if we, I'm not in favor of approving something like for five years, but with the idea of, yeah, well, we'll go back and change it. I would just rather approve it for one year. I know the gentleman from Rollout Academy who came up and said he'd like the plan, you know, I'm just not in favor of like setting a five-year budget, but then, it's like setting a five-year budget, but then saying, well, we'll fix it. Just go ahead and do whatever you want the first year, we'll fix it at another time. I would just rather amend it to just say, we'll give them their, we'll do the 50% with, with the bond payment reduction and then look at it again, like you first suggested, right? Let's just do something for this year, have the staff go back and look at it and then do something more permanent. I'm just not in favor of voting on something that's getting the permanent record that we know we're going to go back and probably change anyway. I just don't think that's a good business practice. So, I'd just rather would see the amendment to just do, do it this year and go back to the staff and then rethink about it for '26, '27 and '28.
Do you want to make that amendment?
I could make, yeah, so I'll, I'll make the motion that we, I'm trying to think of what the wording would be, something to the effect of.
Just implement this for '25, '26.
That we will implement the portion on the board work for '25, '26 and direct the staff to come back with more information for the following years, something to that effect. That's the motion I'd like to make.
So, we got a motion to the original motion, so we need a second for that, yep?
No, an amendment to the original.
I mean amendment, sorry. We need a second motion.
You need a second to his amendment.
Correct, yeah, we've got a mo, yeah, so we need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, now there's a discussion on that. Any discussion on what he's saying, approve it for this year, have the staff come back?
Yeah, quick comment. I think, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think it just creates more uncertainty because we have, what you're doing is basically taking off the commitment to 60% in '26, '27, 80% in '27, '28, and 100% thereafter. That's what you're suggesting, right?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not taking the moral commitment away, I'm just saying that the staff will then have an opportunity to come back and give us some more information. I mean, I think we've, what would you say, verbally, morally committed to it. I'm not saying change any of those out numbers, I would just like to see. The question is, are we going to, are we going to use, well, we have to deduct the bond payment off of it in the future. It's just too quick, like I'm, I'm kind of like with Mr. Choate and Ms. Felton, like I can't do all these numbers in my brain. I don't want to affect our bond, you know, our bond rating, whatever it is Ms. Sellers is talking about. So, I would just rather, we know we have to make the bond payment and so let's just do something for this coming year and then let's rethink about whether we're going to do the bond payment or not do the bond payment and reduce that money before we hand it out to the charters. It's complicated and I can't do all this in my brain right now. So, for me, let's just do the one year and then get the information we need and come up with the plan that we want to implement from this point forward. To be honest with you, I would just vote on it the way it is tonight, right? As I'm sitting here, I'm.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
Let's at least do that.
You know, and Mr. Zickoff, I was like, man, I wish they'd just take the win, you know? And to be honest with you, and just, just go with it because you're right. Now, it's like, well, let's go rethink about it. Maybe when they come back with some more information and they give us different numbers, I might think, oh, maybe it should only be 55% in the, in the, in two years out, and 70, you know, I mean, I don't know, I just, we went through this all, went through a workshop, we have these numbers, it's, it's a good amount of money for the charter schools, they have it for the next five years, they can plan it out. It may not be exactly what, what they wanted, it may not be exactly what you wanted, but it's all, it was done, it was a package. And then, now we're here trying to take the package apart and do what you want to do, address my concerns, think about Ms. Felton's concerns, Ms. Bray's concerns. So, to me, if we're going to do, if we're going to take the package apart, then we should have another workshop to put it back together. I would like to give, you know, a partial win tonight because I know we want to do something next year. So, that's, it's kind of like the lesser of all the evils, you know? Do, do something for one year and then we, it sounds like what we've kind of decided is the package we've decided on is not what we want to do anymore. Okay, well, then let's have another workshop and put together another package, but let's do at least one year so they can, we can show a commitment to this. That's kind of where I am in my, in my thought process on this, so.
I, I would, I would just, if I may, I would just counter to say, and I didn't mean to take us in the opposite direction, I was trying to take us forward, not backward, that this motion, this amendment should fail because what you're doing is you're, you're taking away what we had agreed to, to just do one year. So, my suggestion would be, let's, if, if the board doesn't want to come back and revisit these numbers, even though it's a very, in the grand scheme of things, a very small amount of money, let's at least stick with what's on the board work. Let's not remove what's already here, which is what I think your amendment does.
It does, to address, to address your concerns, to see what we want to do. But if you're, if you're willing to, and I know you didn't make a motion, I guess, so because, so you're willing to go ahead and, and support what's on the board work as is?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I think we should go farther.
Yeah, but.
But he didn't make a motion.
But he didn't make a motion. So, if I, if I withdrew my motion, then we would just vote on, we would vote on the motion as is and the board work as is. That's what we were doing, okay? Well, I will withdraw my motion so we can just vote on the board, board work as is.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Withdrawn, withdrawn. You're still on the board though, did you want to speak again? Okay?
I, I completely understand where Mr. Tatum is coming from and, and I'm, I'm fine with going forward with what we have and then coming back to discuss it or either one, either one. I really, at this point, don't care. I just don't want to rush and make changes to everything right now. That is my concern. If we're going to approve what's here, great. If we're going to approve for the coming year, great. I, either way, then at least they know what they're going to work with for, for the coming school year. And I want that. I want them to know what they have for the coming school year. But I don't want to pull it apart as you, to use your description of taking the package apart and try and rebuild it right now.
All right. No other board members are let up to speak, so we have, we have a motion as second to approve what is currently on the board, the board work for this evening. So, we are ready to vote on the authorization to amend charter school contracts to share a portion of the sales SRTAC, qualified charter schools beginning '25, '26 fiscal year, which will start at 50%. And that passes 5 to 0. Mr. Chapman and Ms. Cox, we can put on the workshop or the 29th or 22nd to have you guys come back and look at what it looks like to move it up quicker.
We have clear direction.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, on to new business with no superintendent recommendation. Number one is the approval of CRI Human Resources Compliance Report. I know Mr. Daniels talked about this at the last workshop, I believe, with the audit committee. So I just need a motion as second to approve the compliance report.
Sorry, second.
So you got a motion as second. I don't see any board members let up to speak about this. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the CRI Human Resources Compliance Report that was presented to us by the audit committee. And that passes...
Yep, I vote here.
Five, zero. All right, item number two for new business. Discussion regarding the superintendent's search process and the forthcoming interviews. Dr. Vogel is here to walk us through some things that he'd like some direction on from us. So I'll go ahead and give it over to you, Dr. Vogel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with your team and FSBA, and Mrs. Messina is watching this evening if we need her. We've accomplished a lot in seven days. The website's up. The ads have been posted. Quality's posted. And we're really working right on schedule right now. We even had one applicant today that's being processed, so we're moving forward there.
I was getting nervous.
Yes. But we expect more applications. Second item, last meeting, we talked about the board members selecting a thematic area, and we provided board members with the five areas. And what we would like to do is get the board member... Each board member to select an area this evening. What will happen then is Mrs. Messina will contact each board member. We have a bank of questions for each of those areas, and board members have the option of using some of those. Or if you have a question you'd like to ask that's not one of those, we're certainly willing to use that question. And then she'll prepare worksheets for everyone.
Did we send that out to everyone, Laura?
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah.
So if we could just go through them quickly, and if board members would want to select... Mr. Cho, would you like to go through that?
No, go ahead. You can go ahead and...
Okay, fine. Is there anyone that would like personal leadership?
I'll take it.
Okay, Mr. Tatum?
Unless somebody else really wants it.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Instructional excellence and leadership.
Here.
Okay, great. Mrs. Felton, business, finance, and operations?
The finance guy?
I was going to say, I would do it if you don't.
I would... I personally would like the community... The fourth one, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'll get the finance?
Okay, great. Thank you.
And that leaves me with performance accountability.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
That's a good one.
Okay, I'll take it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Can't mess that up too bad.
So we have community relation is going to be... Cho?
Yes. Mr. Cho would be board, staff, and community relations. And then Mrs. Spray would be business, finance, and operations. And then the performance accountability would be Mr. Kennedy. Thank you very much, and so that will help us prepare all of the questions and work with the board members on that. Next area, community feedback. We talked about FSBA handling that, and they'll be working with your communications department. We have some models, and we'll be starting to put that information out, and it'll be available to board members through FSBA. So as soon as we start getting the first applicant, we'll go ahead and move that forward. We have a handout on best practices for district staff during a search, and Mr. Chapman has shared that with the senior leadership team. So we've accomplished that. Breakfast and lunch sponsors. I've been working with Mary Glass from the foundation, and I'm very pleased that they will handle all of the dinners and the breakfasts and lunches. So what we would do is the applicants would come in. The finalists that the board decides to bring forward would be coming in, and there would be a continental breakfast in the cafe on the 18th and 19th. There would be lunches available, probably at the cafe. And then there would be an evening light dinner for the applicants at the... Right before the meet and greet. And so the foundation's going to go ahead and handle that. And then what we thought for the best place for the meet and greet, we thought the Manatee Technical College would be excellent. Mr. Chapman and Laura and Mary Glass, we talked about that. And we have a large room there where we could separate the candidates. And then we also have another room where we could have that light dinner there for the applicants. So we think that would work out real well. MTI is somewhat centrally located, so we're working on that. As far as the hotel, Mr. Cho and I are working on some options for the hotel where the applicants, or the finalists, and where FSBA would stay. And we should have that by the end of the week. I think Mr. Cho's working on some, and we've talked about that. As far as the school and community tour, I talked to Mr. Chapman, and he's recommended that we work with Derek and also Omar.
Work with who? I didn't hear.
To do a community tour, and...
Oh. There was a sneeze with that word, and I didn't hear it. Sorry.
And I think the board went on a tour earlier this year, about a two-hour tour. Already had some board members had a chance to go on that. And so we'll come up with a tour, and so that's in the works there. The next item that we had was the finalist interview schedule, and board members have that in front of you there. And I'd like to just go through this draft here and explain that to you. If we have three finalists, we're certainly willing to go ahead and amend that sheet. If we have more finalists, we can... We've had as many as five finalists, but just for the purpose of this discussion tonight, this will give you an idea.
Print it out.
What we have.
It's the same thing as last one. Yeah.
So...
Oh, there you go. Got it, yeah.
Basically, what we have would be an hour and a half interviews for the entire board. They would be... And that's the amount of time we used last year, and that's our recommended time. It seems to be the right amount of flow time there where the... Where five board members have... Usually we'll divide up some of the time there, and we'll be able to have those interviews. While the board... While the one applicant, A, for example, is in the interview, the other applicants, B and C, would be on the school tours. And we do that for a couple of reasons. And those people are occupied, so they're not hearing the questions from the board that they're asking the first applicant. And then the tours would encompass both schools and key areas in the community. And that would give us a little bit more time to have those. And we'll certainly... We'll get a draft of the tour. If board members have any particular places they feel like they would like to go, you know, that we can work through the board on that. And then we would have that dinner for the light dinner. It would be at the Manatee Technical College, and we've already arranged that date for them. We have tentatively approved their... Because they're available. Then we would have the community meet and greet from 6:15 to 7:45 that night. And as Mr. Dai, we talked about, the board members would be invited to attend that community meet and greet. Mr. Dai has approved that event for all the board members there. And then at that meet and greet, we would have input specifically from that meet and greet through a QR code, where anybody that goes there would go ahead and can react to some questions that we would have, and then board members would receive that whole report. So you'd have community input from there. On the next day, this would be the individual interviews. I know we've talked about different amounts of time. Our recommendation is that we do a one-hour interview. That seems to have worked out pretty well with a 15-minute break. And as you can see, that's a board meeting briefing day. So we've actually incorporated time for the board members to have the briefing on that same day. So if the one hour would be, work out okay. And on that particular day, the board would be able to ask questions individually to all of the applicants. What we really like is, on the first day, when you have the panel interview, there are going to be some things that board members would probably take notes on that are... That they might have want more clarification on. So then they have the finalists one-on-one, so they can get clarification on that or basically ask whatever issues or questions they'd like to ask with. So that's the way it would work on that day. And then we would have the finalists together for lunch. And what the concept we've used very successfully is that all of the finalists spend some time together, and they'll go ahead and meet each other and so forth, too. And that seems to have worked out well. At the meet and greet, what normally would happen there is the chairman and Andrew Messina would welcome people that come. Each of the finalists would be asked to give about a five-minute talk on why they want to come to Manatee County. And then they would break out into different areas of the room, and all the community individuals who attend can go around and meet and talk with every one of them personally. So that would go ahead and take care of that. And then I think the board was wise to allow another week before they make their final decision after that, after the interviews are over. The other handout that I provided to you is a tally sheet. And Mr. Kennedy asked about this the last time, so I wanted to review this. I know some of the board members have seen this before. But the way we would determine the semifinalists or finalists, depending on where we go, the first time we come back on the... When we come back on the 26th, each board member would have a tally sheet, and then they would... The applicants would be listed below the names. So what we would do is, we would ask... We'd bring up each applicant, and we will... FSBA would facilitate this. And then board members would make their selection if they'd want the person to continue in the process. So if five board members indicate, "Yes, we want to talk to this person," then we'd set that person aside, pretty... For sure, pretty sure that person's going to come. Four, we'd have a discussion. Three, we'd have a discussion. As Mr. Kennedy said, if it's less than three board members, then, for example, if two board members advocated for a person, then the two board members would have a chance to talk and see if they could convince someone else to... Board member to have that person in. If not, we would then eliminate that person. So that's where we would get our numbers of people that come in to the finalist round. We use a very similar process in the same form when the board selects the superintendent. When the board is at the selection process at the end, if you board members remember, there are several rounds of discussion. And so even though we use the form, it's pretty much a good discussion on all the applicants, on the finalists of the board, and we use that process. So that seems to have worked out well. Any questions on the information? I know it's late, and I've gone through this pretty quickly. Does that sound like everyone is fine? Yeah, Sarah?
Yeah.
I'm good.
I don't... Yeah, I don't see any...
Chad, I just have one real quick. Dr. Vogel, I just had a... And I said this at the last time we discussed, that anything I do one-on-one, I would prefer to be in a... Either recorded or videoed or a public environment. I just don't feel comfortable having a behind closed door meeting with a candidate just because of the nature of what we do. I don't know if that's normal, or some boards do it that way, or some board members do it that way. That's just my own preference, so...
We haven't had... We've always had the one-on-one, and it's never... There's never been a question about it. And in fact, board members have desired that time to really hone in on some specific issues that they've had. And we haven't had any issues or questions on that. I might refer that to Mr. Dai.
Yeah, I don't think there's a legal issue.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't. I didn't think there was. It's just more of a personal preference. And maybe I can think about it a little bit, too, because we're pretty far off from that point.
Yeah.
But maybe it could just be as simple as I do it in this room, so that if it's easy to capture, if some member of the public or members of the public did want to sit in on that conversation, because that's all I'm after, is giving the public the opportunity to hear the questions that I'm asking, or a conversation I'm having with a candidate. It's, you know, it's just a thought. We can come back to it. I just wanted to kind of circle back.
That sounds good. I think that would also be a good discussion. In participating in a number of searches, board members have really valued that particular time because that key one-on-one relationship is really important. But that's something that I know you probably would want to talk to Mrs. Messina about, and we can talk about that again, if a board member would want to do that.
Okay, thanks.
So great. Thank you.
Personally, I like that. Personally, I like that initial private meeting because that establishes... That starts to build a relationship. It did with me, anyway.
No, that's a good point.
So...
That's the balance, yeah.
Right. You got to kind of... Because you have a lot of interaction with the superintendent.
Sure.
One-on-one, that's not public. You know, so that would be... I think that would put the candidate at a uncomfortable spot, if that was... That's just my opinion.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. You've been through this, so I appreciate your feedback. Yeah, I do. I do.
And the other thing, you know, if you would want to leave your door open or something to that effect, that would be an individual decision on that. You know, board members, you know, individual board members have that option if they would want to do that, or whatever, how they feel. But that can be a discussion for another time. Ms. F.
I don't know. I kind of view it like speed dating.
It is in a way, I guess.
It is in a way.
With the schedule we have here.
I mean, it's not... It's not not three minutes, and do you have a connection? It's, you know, you have an hour, and you have... Do you have a connection? But because we do, and I completely agree with Ms. Spray on this, that, you know, I would prefer to be able to make sure that we are compatible as workmates, you know, because this is a partnership with the superintendent. And, you know, if I have to have a tough conversation with the superintendent in the future, I'd like to know, you know, because that's not going to be public. You know, I'd like to kind of gauge how we function together one-on-one without a bunch of public input or viewing or...
Yeah, no, I get it. And just to be clear, this was just for me, not for everybody else. So I respect whatever you all want to do. And that was just my thought for me.
And my recommendation is, just like Ms. Felton's saying, is one-on-one. Because, you know, I think one of the things that's so important is that one-on-one direct communication with each individual board member, and communicating with that board member in the way that the board member wants the superintendent to communicate with him. And to me, that is so valuable because the way I would communicate might be different with different board members, too. And so that's why I think, and I think you hit it nail on the head. We had a nice communication. We did that one-on-one with the new board member orientation earlier. I think we had a good talk about that. So, but anyway, that's something that, you know, we can have further conversations.
Sure, no problem.
Perfect.
Okay.
Awesome.
Next steps, as the applications come in, as I said, one's being processed right now. We'll get those up as soon as we can. July 22nd, there is another board meeting, and I'll be back. Mr. Tatum asked if I would be here to provide updates. We'll have all the applications closed in by then. I can give some updates then. And on the... We're back on the 29th, and we'll work on the time on that one. And then we'll be moving the process forward. So anything else that you need or anything, please give me a call, and I'll be available.
You mentioned July 26th. What was that date?
We have 22nd, and we have the 29th.
Okay, you had mentioned the 26th earlier.
Pardon me. I'm sorry. It should be the 26th. The 22nd is the next board meeting, and then the 29th is a board workshop, and that's when we'll...
Okay, so the 26th...
I don't have anything on the 26th.
Okay.
Oh, the 26th is when the applications... When we're... When the... Let me get to my calendar right here. The 26th... The 26th is the board selects, no, we don't have that. That's, that's not until August when we select the superintendent.
Yeah, August.
That's when we select the superintendent.
So it grabs the 26th, okay.
Right.
There's nothing on July 26th.
That's what I want to clarify because he had said something about the 26th and wrote it down. So I could come back and ask what that really meant, but I think you meant the 29th.
Yeah, but that is an important day, August 26th, because that's when the board selects the superintendent.
Right, yeah.
Negotiations begin.
Next month, the month after the.
Right, August.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Vogel. Really appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for sitting through all of this, you know, with us today.
Appreciate it. It's really enjoyable, like I said, working with your team again and it's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, move to instructional updates, as if you haven't presented enough.
I was about to say, I presented a lot of data today, so I'll keep these remarks very short. One really exciting piece of news, construction at the Soren for Lab is now complete.
Ooh.
And the early learning teams began staging the innovative space to activate families with the knowledge they need to support their child's readiness for pre-K and kindergarten. So we're planning a series of soft openings throughout July leading up to a formal ribbon-cutting ceremony and official grand opening this fall. So very exciting news out of Dr. Halpin and her amazing team. And again, thank you to Mr. Rinaldi and his team for all the support with that space because it's, I think it's going to be a really exciting initiative for our young learners. This week, we're also hosting our dual language institute for our dual language teachers. So presentations included current dual language teachers, connecting with their peers, author talks, and our 2024 T-Sol Teacher of the Year, Louis Herrera, speaking. The institute goes through Wednesday and it's also the last week of our summer program for middle school ELLs, which is called Camp Creator. The ESE department really did an amazing job training our school administrators. We had more than 60 school administrators take the time to participate in our ESE best practices training facilitated by Julie Weatherly last week. She presented practical tips as they relate to IDEA and Section 504. And our school administrators really walked away with a greater understanding of how to support these learners on their campuses. We also have teams of self-contained ESE teachers who've been coming in for the last several weeks to come together and plan curriculum for our self-contained classrooms and really improve the quality of instruction and support their peers there. So they're really working on what, what curriculum looks like in K-5 or multi-grade classrooms on those general education standards for our ESE students. And finally, congratulations to our MTC graduates this week. We already had our law enforcement graduation and practical nursing pinning. And then on Thursday, we'll have 700 students eligible to graduate from MTC in both a morning graduation at 10:00 a.m. and then an evening graduation at 5:00 p.m. So I really look forward to that event. MTC also finished our summer career exploration camp with great success. We had more than 40 students that were able to shadow MTC students in a program of their interests. That's very cool. And finally, a really positive student accolade, we had a Nolan Middle School Medical Program student, seventh grader, who placed third in the health career preparations competition at Hosa International, which means he was third place in the world.
Awesome.
Pretty amazing. So we'll have, we'll be recognizing our CTE competition winners at an upcoming board meeting, but I thought that was too good not to share tonight.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Operations, Mr. Rinaldi.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Chapman. Couple of quick things on, with human resources, the operations job fair. We actually held one this afternoon from nine o'clock to noon at the Wakeland Center. And I'd like to thank Dr. Britton and Mr. Edwards to keep, for keeping me up to date as real time. So we had 89 people attend, 16 offers were made to custodians, eight offers were made to food service. In addition to that, we've got four interviews scheduled for the print shop and we're able to refer two individuals for IT interviews as well. So it was fairly successful. We had 16 candidates for transportation, primarily bus drivers, and they need to go through the process or will be going through the process of getting their CDL permit and then going through our class. The final operations in-person job fair will be held on July 22nd at noon, once again at the Wakeland Support Center. So that'll wrap us up for the summer on the operations side. An update on the virtual job fair for the pairs and teachers, we had a total of 216 candidates. 67 candidates will move forward to a second interview at the school level and HR continues to work with that group through the interviewing and the hiring process with these candidates. The next virtual job fair for this group will be held July 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And information and signup links will be made available on social media and on the district's website this week. So that's coming up. In the last two weeks, HR has processed 100 hires, 25 of whom were rehires and five bus drivers in the last week as well. The certification specialists within HR have been working with teachers applying for certification renewal and moving from temporary to permanent certification. In the month of June, they assisted in excess of 100 teachers and were happy to have those highly qualified and returning teachers back to the district. Food and nutrition services, since the beginning of the summer, food and nutrition services has served 75,000, over 75,000 meals at our 66 summer sites. That's an increase of about 15%. Last year, same period, we served 65,000 meals. So we're getting out in the community. Food and nutrition services will be sponsoring a kids wellness and resource fair on July 24th at Lincoln Park from 11:00 a.m. to 2:15. Community resources will be available for families and the summer bus will be serving meals from 1:15 to 2:15 as well. Transportation currently has two drivers in our CDL class that started yesterday. There are 14 applicants in addition to those 16 that we just identified today. Their staff is working with them. In addition to them getting their permits, we're also offering CDL tutoring to that group as well in order to expedite, expedite them through the process. The transportation leadership team attended the 76th Annual FAPT Conference, which is their statewide transportation conference. During that time, the team accepted an award from Sun State Bus Centers for Manatee's Vehicle Maintenance Mechanics. They continue to receive multiple certifications through their, through the offered courses and professional development. When it comes to this reward, there was only one other district in the state that received the award as well, and this is the second time that we've received the award. So the vehicle maintenance group is a very small group, but they're a very active group and they're keeping up with their certifications. In addition to that, I'll give you a little bit of a rezoning update. So last Wednesday, the rezoning teams completed the second round of public meetings. We held at Lakewood Ranch, Breen River High, Manatee High, Palmetto, and Parish Community High School. During this round, we identified how you could access the proposed maps on our website. We showed how that they could provide public input and provide feedback on those maps as well. Those maps are going to be open until August 15th for public input. The rezoning, rezoning website is up and operational and can be accessed from the district homepage. There's a scrolling banner there that'll bring you right to the rezoning. All the maps and data are present there. And as I said, it will be active through August 15th at this point. That's all for operations.
I've got a question on that. Did you get the, or did the vendor get the, where you can punch in your address and find?
We, we are doing, as a matter of fact, this afternoon, I was punching addresses, making sure they were going to the right places. So we expect by the end of this week that we'll have that up and running. So they finished it, we're doing the testing right now, and we're probably going to roll it out in the next two days.
Okay.
The exact same question.
Awesome, thank you.
Did you?
Legal update.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Board, Superintendent, not interim, Superintendent. There actually is, there's no such thing as a interim superintendent.
I heard that the other day.
Yeah, so enjoy it.
I think you just take your parking space just because it's sitting there empty, right? Someone might believe you. But anyway.
Anyway, so in between the workshop and this, and our regular meeting, I looked at the issue of the tax collector claiming commission on the, on the millage, the one mill, and read the statute that they're citing and their, the memo that their staff member sent it with. And I, I came to con clear, a clear conclusion that I did not see any support in the statute for their position. And so I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Pennley and with Ms. Sellers. So I think we should send a response legally back to them cordially with our position, but at the same time, I agree with, with your effort to politically also meet with the tax collector and, and convince them that that's the, that's the wrong thing to do. But I feel strongly on the, that I could not see any support in the statute. It's a, it's a statute on taxes and it's kind of vague, but it, it does not have any support for, for a voted millage to have any form of commission whatsoever. It does say, as Mr. Pennley pointed out, that the non-voted millage does have a commission to the, to the tax collector, but it's paid by the county commission.
Right.
So I think it's good.
Appreciate that. Can you, so I do have a meeting with him on Friday morning? Can you get?
Yes.
A legal opinion by then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then share that with the rest of us?
Yeah, 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 sure.
So every time we go, we can repeat the same thing.
We'll all bring copies.
Yeah.
May I ask a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
So assuming that negotiations don't go as we would like, what is the, what would be the legal procedure to challenge that? It would be, it would go to a state district court or something? I mean, what would be the?
Yeah, if you could, if you couldn't resolve it through negotiation, you would file a local civil suit over it.
But I'm just curious, what, what kind of court would, would get that?
Circuit court.
Like a Florida circuit court?
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yep, locally.
Okay, great. That's all I had.
Anyone else comment on that?
Nope, do it.
All right, Superintendent remarks.
Everybody took my thunder, Mr. Chair, but I will say that in your HR board work, we made our last round of principal moves and some new principals. So at, at many of our schools, which is great because that sets now the team for July 1st. We removed some interim tags on some of our senior leaders, which is great. So we have some new principals, some principals moving around and some senior leaders having their interim tag removed. So we are now set for our full leadership team heading into July 1st and our leadership conference and so on. So they're busy getting to their schools and, and readjusting, but, but we're done with, with all of that. So that's fantastic. And other than that, we will thank you for agreeing to the July 15th board workshop on collective bargaining. That will be the next time we were together and as we have a little break here for the July 4th holiday. So, thank you, Board.
Thank you. All right, Board comments, Kenny, Tatum, Felton, Spray, myself.
I'll be quick. I just want to thank Superintendent Chapman and the leadership team for Danielle and Ms. Cox for getting everything ready for tonight and for the really professional leadership of this district. I mean, we are really, we're, I really feel like we're coming into this next school year really well positioned. And I just want to address my board colleagues for a second, and I hope we never take this for granted. That's why I want to highlight this tonight. And tonight was a good example. We had a good debate, and we've had many since Heather and I got here in November. But I got to tell you, I've been, I've served on some real talk with some real toxic people on this school board. And I don't ever want to take for granted how much I appreciate the, even in disagreement, we all respect each other and we get along. And I just, it really kind of dawned on me tonight during the charter school conversation, like I kind of flashed back to some previous boards. I'm like, man, this would have devolved into some real, into some real, you know, negativity, but.
...
Well, I, but I just really appreciate that about this team, not, not just this board, but this team in general, everybody up here and out in this room and this building. And I just want to just highlight that and, and just kind of, just always hold it out there that I, that I think for a public board, I really think we're, we're keeping the bar very high for the way that we, that we address the public, the way that we address each other, and I really very much appreciate that. So I'll see you all after our, our little mini-break here. I'll see you all in mid-July. So if not, out and about somewhere. So, thanks, Chip.
Mr. Tatum.
Okay, good evening. I'll try and be quick, too, based on the time. So I do, we'll do my safety bit. A lot of us like to leave this part of the country and go out west. It's cooler and it's drier. But unfortunately, when you get out there, you know, here's a story from June 23rd. Three hikers found dead after they jumped in California waterfall near Lake Tahoe. And here's another one from Colorado Springs, where I used to live, where there was a hiker from New Hampshire that tried to hike up Pike's Peak and they didn't find him till two days later, and he was unfortunately deceased at the time. So if you're going to head out that way, if you've never lived out there, the elevation, the highest elevation, I looked this up, the highest elevation in the United States east of the Mississippi is called Mount Mitchell. It is 6,668, 6,684 feet above sea level. The Air Force Academy starts, right, where the Air Force Academy is at 7,258 feet above sea level. So the Air Force Academy is higher than everything east of the Mississippi. And there's actually 40% less oxygen at that altitude than there is, you know, east of the Mississippi, to the point where the U.S. Olympic teams train out in Colorado Springs area because you have less oxygen, your body makes more red blood cells and it carries more oxygen. So if you're going to head out that way and you're going to hike up these 14,000-foot peaks and all that kind of stuff, just, there's less oxygen, it's dry, you need water, it's long hikes. It's 90 degrees in the day and 40 degrees at night. And just be careful because as I can see right here, people don't understand the different climate out there. So that's kind of on the negative side. On the positive side, went to the MTC law enforcement graduation and that was good. And I just am really impressed with our MTC programs. I always meet, you know, young people who are kind of walking around looking for something to do. I'm like, have you been to MTC? And they all go, no, just drive over there. Just walk, just drive over there or take a, I don't have a car. Okay, take a Uber over there, right? I don't have a job, I don't have any money. All right, call me, I'll come take you over there, right? Like just walk in the door and go, I don't know what to do with my life. And they'll take it from there, right? Seriously, they'll take it from there. You can't find something with 55 different programs to do over there from like, you know, filing people's nails to running computer-operated manufacturing equipment. You, you got to sit down and think about what you're doing with your life, so. And then the last thought I had was, when, when people like Dr. Vogel come for something very specific, is there a way, and this is kind of you as the chairman, obviously, to maybe move the schedule around so he doesn't have to sit here for, like we put him at the beginning, get him in, get him out, and get him out the door. Just if we have people that, all they're going to be here for is one thing, to get him in, get him out, and get him on their way. Because that was, I mean, he's, I'm sure you appreciated being, anyway, that was my point for you to think about, you know? If we know it's going to be someone that, making them sit here for two or three hours when they just have one thing to do, if we could, you know, modify the schedule a little bit to get them in and get them out. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to agree with Richard on the hiking. As a hiker in California growing up, yeah, it's a totally different climate. Please be careful out there. And you and I can go on a recruiting spree for MTC because I've got my neighbor now signed up to do welding and now my second kid is starting at MTC in August. So I am populating it with my family and my neighbors. We need more people. But yeah, MTC's fabulous and of course, I support everything going on there. Just a couple of things. So had a lovely time at FSBA conference. As the board knows, because you approved it, I am on the advisory advocacy committee now for the FSBA. I'm also now probably on legislative committee and the school safety ad hoc committee for the FSBA as well. And I was also now the alternate director for the FSBA Board of Directors for District 23. So I'm a little busy and I'm loving it and it's a lot of fun. It's, I'm really enjoying being part of the bigger picture for the school districts and being able to advocate for districts. to advocate for districts. And on that note, I want to thank every single human being in Manatee County who called their legislators and bugged the holy heck out of them about the APA's IBCTE funds. Ms. Spray and I, of course, went together up there and harassed as many people as we could find.
We did.
We did, and, and as, at FSBA, we, we heard from Dr. Danielle Thomas, how she was getting calls from legislators, asking them, asking her to tell all of our population to stop calling. So, this shows you how effective that our public can be, our parents and our teachers and our staff, for working hard, and they will sometimes, sometimes, listen. And so, we got that funding back, and so I am very excited about that, and very proud of everyone who called and advocated for that, and I just want to thank everyone who did that, because it made a huge difference statewide, it's not just for our county, it made a huge difference statewide. One other thing, I did get to go visit the Palmetto Boys and Girls Club, and had a great time there. If you haven't been to one of the Boys and Girls Clubs in a while, schedule a visit, they love us to visit. And then, really, that, that wraps it up for me.
Thank you. I was alternate for like, two years and never got called on, so, which...
I've been informed I will probably get called on at least once this year.
Yeah, someone was like, you're going to have to go to Four Walton Beach for one of the meetings, I'm like, oh my goodness, but I never got called.
Yeah.
Ms. Spray?
I agree with Mr. Kennedy, we do have a pretty solid board up here, I don't think I'd ever get to the point where I'd be yelling at anybody, that's just too disrespectful. I mean, yell at my husband, but he's very nice. But I wanted to say on HR work that we now have a new Director of Communications, want to welcome her aboard, and then a retirement of 41 years for Ms., for one of our MTC individuals, so they never want to be recognized after they're here that long, but I want to say thank you to them, and then an instructional for a teacher that was, is retiring after 31 years. So, with that, and, and then with the presentation of the PM data, I know Mr. McCarthy just gets into that so good, and I just want to say thank you to him, because I, I've done data like that before, and you can lose yourself, I mean, you start working on it, and you lose track of time, and all of a sudden, it's, you know, 6 o'clock, and you're like, oh my gosh. So, I can imagine what that deck looked like if he scaled this down, so, I mean, God bless, and that's just, that's just the way data analysts do, and that's, I think, I appreciate that. So, other than that, thank you to the board and Chair, thank you for leading this meeting, and the workshop today, it's been a long day.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's been a long day, productive day, got the budgets done, and so, thank you to the staff for putting that all together, especially your finance staff, you guys are awesome, we said it this morning, but I'll say it again, and thank everybody else putting, putting this stuff, and I know it's easy, we come up here, here for a couple hours, agree on some things, you know, say yes, vote, and we leave, but this takes weeks and weeks and weeks to put together these meetings, so, really appreciate the staff for all the hard work you guys are doing. And, yeah, everybody enjoy the break, enjoy 4th of July, don't get hurt with fireworks, we'll see you all Ju-, July 15th for our SHAD meeting, we are adjourned.